Good evening. Welcome, everyone, to our board meeting this evening. I'd also like to extend a welcome to our new board members, Sheri Morgan and Howard Hills.[32.61][32.61][applause] Mrs. Weber, could you please conduct a roll call to establish quorum?
Mrs. Morgan?
Here.
Mr. Hills?
Here.
Mrs. Perry? Dr. Kelly?
Here.
Dr. Malchesky?
Here. Okay, I called the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Kate, can you administer the pledge?
Please stand. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we move on to the next item on the agenda, I'd like to take just a moment of silence. We had a shooting today at a school in Wisconsin, and let's just take a moment for those students. Okay. Mrs. Weber, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay.
If there were any changes to the agenda, and no, there are not.
I'm making a motion that we move item 13 on the agenda to item number five on the agenda.
Which is...
Second.
Can you say that? I'm pulling it up.
Item 13 is closed session. We'd like to move that before item number five. I seconded the motion.
Well, moving closed session to item number five before we've had a chance to discuss the process for selecting an interim superintendent would be inappropriate, it seems.
No. I believe...
Are we having a discussion about the motion right now?
You have a motion in a second.
Yeah. Well, it comports with parliamentary process, and it's something that we've been assured is proper and fitting and is appropriate, and it's ultimately, I think, will enable the board to proceed tonight. And so I repeat that my motion is to move item 13 to item five on the agenda. And it doesn't preclude us from discussing the item that relates to the interim superintendent if we choose to do so. But whether we do that or not, we want the closed session to be item five rather than item 13.
So my concerns about that are that the process discussion that we're supposed to have later in the meeting is supposed to establish a process on the part of the board for setting up governance procedures for selecting interim superintendent candidates. And the closed session to share names of potential candidates before we've had any opportunity to discuss as a board what a potential process might mean seems to circumvent the process in terms of governance.
Well, I don't think it circumvents at all. We respect the staff's ability to provide us with information about the process for selecting an interim as well as the search for a permanent superintendent. But we think that the board has a governance responsibility for addressing this in the closed meeting, and we'd be glad to hear what the staff has to say about it, and we'd be glad to work with the staff anytime the staff wants to meet and talk with us about it. But right now, tonight, we want to get into the closed session so that we can address the priorities that we need to address in order for us to move forward with the appointment of an interim superintendent. And so I reiterate that, you know, my motion is to move item number 13 to item number five.
If I may add, per government code 54957, it's on the agenda as an information item, and therefore we are able to move it per governance standards of making motions to move items on the agenda. We're not out of order or out of sequence here. We do have the ability to take that into closed session and move closed session up in the agenda. And typically, closed session is usually offered immediately following or actually prior to open session. And the fact that it's been put at the end of the session, per guidance by the attorney, we've also sought counsel from the same law firm, and they said it's not a problem to move this agenda item forward.
The issue I'm raising has nothing to do with the legality of it. The issue I'm raising has to do with board governance procedures and the fact that as a board, we should establish process as opposed to going into closed session and mentioning names of potential candidates absent that process. And I do understand that there have been conversations with potential candidates already, which undermines board governance. So I think that process question is very important.
Well, you know, the thing about it is, on one hand, you say that it's not a legal issue. Since it is legal, that's important, and it's also important that we exercise our responsibility as a governing body to address the issue that is the highest priority issue for this meeting. And there's nothing inappropriate about it. It doesn't preclude anything. It doesn't prevent us from having the benefit of the staff's advice. So, you know, we look for... You know, there's two elements to the agenda item you're referring to. One is with respect to the appointment of an interim superintendent. The other is the search for a permanent superintendent. We want to go into closed session right now, at least I do. That's why I made the motion, because I think that we have a governance responsibility, and it's not a responsibility that can be fulfilled by staff. It's a responsibility that should be fulfilled by this body, because that's what we were elected by the people to do. And we don't have a board president right now. We don't have a board clerk right now, and we don't have the ability to proceed with the rest of this meeting unless we go into closed session and address the meetings that we're going to address in the closed session. So that's why I offered the motion, and I'm perfectly amenable to discussing this as long as we want to discuss it. But as far as I'm concerned, I would ask that we call the question, because what I don't want to do is get into discussion about whether exactly the way we're proceeding is the way we should be proceeding. So I would like to get it in closed session so that we can get ourselves duly constituted.
Additionally, item 4A is electing a president pro tem. So we're asking for closed session to come in after that so that we can go into closed session with a president pro tem. So the next item on the agenda after we move to bring item 13 up to number five would be to go into an election for a president pro tem, because only the board can elect a president pro tem. They cannot be appointed by its staff, and we're just trying to make sure we follow governance procedures. Thank you.
Yes.
That's what I meant when I said we need to get duly constituted as soon as possible.
Okay, so I hear that you want to call the question. I want to make a point, which is the discussion of process on the agenda is not about having discussions with staff. It is about us coming together as a board to decide what the process as a board will be to select an interim superintendent. Going into closed session and forwarding names without having a public discussion of that process, I think, is a problem. And I also understand that without being on the board, some of those discussions with possible candidates have already taken place. So I have concerns there's already process problems. But you can call the question. I just want that to be on record.
So have you had any conversations with any candidates for interim superintendent?
I spoke with an executive search firm to get an understanding of the process and found out during that discussion that people had been contacted by people who were not yet on the board, and I reached out to that person to say, "I think it's important you understand, we have not as a board discussed the process yet. We will do that on Monday, and if the board, after discussing the process and meeting in closed session, determines that you will be a candidate, at that point, we would like to get information from you." So yes, I did reach out once I was concerned that the process had been circumvented.
Well, your experience is actually pretty similar to my experience. Nothing's been circumvented, and the people on the board, as far as I'm concerned, it's part of our job to talk to people and gather...
You weren't on the board at that point.
Well, whether you're on the board or not on the board, if you're interested in the affairs of this school district, you have a right to communicate with people about what's in the best interest of the students in the school.
Mr. Hills, you have every right to do so, but you have to understand that you're part of a board, and we have processes that keep clear governance that's transparent to the community. And when you undermine the governance processes that make our community have trust in us, then it's a problem. So yes, you are always welcome to reach out, but when it is about discussing a potential appointment with a candidate before you're on the board, you may have gathered information, but it's not appropriate in terms of our governance body and the faith that our community wants to have in the work that we do because it's transparent.
If I might make one point of order, in moving this item, you would be postponing comments from 16 members of the audience.
What? 16 members of the audience regarding...
You'd be postponing comment from 16 members of the audience on various topics that would all fall after.
I don't think that we're not addressing... I don't think that we're asking to eliminate...
I did not say eliminate. I said you would be postponing the comments from the people who are in the audience.
I don't believe that closed session would take very long.
We wouldn't be denying anybody the right... We would postpone...
I already have a microphone.
Okay. So I would just like to clarify. I would like to clarify that you mischaracterized my discussions with people, that you were not privy to our discussions, and you've mischaracterized it. I didn't have any inappropriate discussions. I talked to a lot of people before, during, and after this meeting was finalized, and the agenda was... What I'm trying to say is, after we were invited to make some recommendations about this agenda, we made the recommendations to the superintendent, and some of our recommendations were not agreed to. And so we're in the process here of correcting the agenda. And I would just like to say that you mischaracterized my... You don't have any way of knowing what I talked to you...
I did not mischaracterize it at all. I said I was concerned that the process was circumvented, which is why I think it's important we have a discussion about governance processes that's transparent to the community before we nominate candidates.
So now you're talking about process again, whereas what I was saying is what you mischaracterized was my... You claimed to have knowledge of the content of my discussions with people, which you don't have. Yeah.
Excuse me?
May I make a comment?
Sure.
Would you turn off your...
What's that?
Would you turn off your microphone? Thank you. I just want to say that I'm going to vote against your motion, mainly for the reasons that Dr. Malchesky stated, but also because the audience is full. We could be in closed session for an hour, and we could lose people who are transparent and want to be involved as far as in the meeting tonight, and I think it's a disservice to the community. Thank you.
We have a second. We do not have a president pro tem right now, so the motion is to move closed session to item five and move on to item number four, which is to nominate a president pro tem.
Yeah, I think the audience needs to understand that we are not duly constituted right now. We don't have a president. We don't have a clerk. We don't have a president pro tem. We need to get on with the business of duly constituting this body. There's nothing having to do with transparency involved here. There is going to be a process for a search for a new superintendent. That's not something we had anything to do with. We didn't have any control of that, and so we are now forced to deal with the process of getting a new superintendent, and we have the capability and we have the knowledge of what an interim superintendent can be and can do, and we need to get on with the business of this school district for the kids. We need a superintendent, and we don't need to take time now to talk about what you do for an interim superintendent. We've got to duly constitute ourselves and busy getting an interim superintendent so we get it on with the real business. And there's two parts of that item that you're talking about on the agenda. One is to talk about an interim superintendent. That is not something that is rocket science. What we need to do is, if you want to go on to the subject of the superintendent, which is the real issue before us, we need to, tonight, duly constitute ourselves, and we've got to enable ourselves, we have to empower ourselves, to get on with the process of getting ready to do a search for a new superintendent. Nobody needs to have a workshop to talk about getting an interim superintendent. The reason we have to get an interim superintendent and expedite it is that the departure of the superintendent was sudden. It was not something that this new board did. It's something that the old board did, and the old board did it on terms which make it necessary for us to expedite this, and therefore I renew my motion.
Mr. Hills, that's why it is on the agenda. It is why it's on the agenda with the closed session. It would be done tonight either way. I prefer a transparent process, but we can vote on it and call the question.
I move to go to a vote. I seconded the motion. We understand the governance process. We have consulted how that process works. We were all at the same conference. In fact, I consulted with many other superintendents because our superintendent did not greet us when we arrived. So we had had to find others to consult with to make sure that what we are asking and how we're asking to do this process within governance guidelines follows protocol, and we are within our boundaries. We are within the guidelines to move item 13 prior to item number five. And the motion has been made. I've seconded it. I'd like to move to a vote, please.
Okay, I'd like to move to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the motion carries three to two. I hope that people will wait...
This is not time for comment. The motion's been made. The vote's been cast. Moving on, please.
So we're moving to closed session? Is that...
No, we're moving to item four, election of president pro tem.
Okay. I'm sorry, I have the... Okay, so we need a nomination for... What is it? President pro tem. I'm sorry, I just lost my agenda. Second.
Is there any discussion? So we call in favor?
I just want to confirm we have a motion and a second to... For Dee Perry to become the president pro tem.
Correct.
Well, I'm certainly ready to vote in favor of that.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
So the board will adjourn into closed session. We will leave this room and head over into closed session, and staff, the majority of staff will wait here with all of you.
It's 6:20. I would like to try and be returning by... No later than 10 till. 30 minutes?
Looking forward to getting all public comments, but we've got to go take care
I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Victoria is going to make an announcement about closed session.
So two items. One, if there are any comments on closed session, we will take them later after the report out of closed session.
That's what we're going to do for right now. Okay, so we're going to move on now to public comment on non-agenda items. So do you call people or do I?
We don't have a clerk yet, so I'll do it unless you want to.
No, go ahead.
Erin Berryman?
You can also say please be quiet or so opposed to...
I could. But first, I have to get my timer up.
Hi, I'm Erin Berryman. I'm here as an alum of LBUSD, as a parent of LBUSD students. I'm a little disconcerted about what's been happening here, so I just really want to impart to the board that many parents here hope that you are doing everything for the benefit of LBUSD students. That's all the documents, the philosophy, the agenda, the accountability is about continuing the incredible improvements that have already been in place for several years, that my kids have benefited and several kids have benefited. Very happy with the previous board and superintendent with the innovation and the incredible programs that benefit LBUSD students. That is the sole responsibility of the board, is every decision, vote should be about the kids. And so that is what I just want to impart, and we hope that the board continues to think about kids, because it doesn't seem that, based on what's happening, extraneous to what's happening on campus does not benefit kids. So this is all about LBUSD students, and many parents appreciate what the incredible LBUSD staff has done for several years in support of the academic, social, and emotional wellness of the whole child.
For that.
We're going to move on now to the annual organizational meeting, item five. We will start with...
We have public comments on this.
Oh, we have public comments on those. Public comment.
Abigail Rodesheimer?
Hi, my name is Abigail, and I'm alumni of LBUSD as of a year and a half ago, and I'm currently studying public policy at the University of Maryland. Coming from the perspective of the press, I'm concerned about the public perception of the school board if new and inexperienced members are ultimately elected to lead this board. Given that both new members have a lack of experience, it would not be wise that they serve as a representative of board character and positions. This is an example set for children, prospective residents, and constituents. We've seen the example of unprofessional and, quite frankly, unfiltered public leadership at a national level, and are all well aware of his reputation among the press. Additionally, I'm glad that there are several members of the community here who quite obviously do not have children in the district, but my concern is that I have never, in my 10 years at the LBUSD district, seen them at any school or district events, and they only seem to represent a certain position. If the only support these members have are from voters who do not have children in the system, what does this say about their values and motives? In the interest of Laguna Beach government and reputation, please consider the qualities of a good leader. I would also like to comment on the choice to move a closed session before public comment. The model at my school, which is ranked 13th in the nation for public policy, is do-good. The obvious maneuver to deter public comment is the opposite. You are here to represent the people and the process. I implore you to do better in the future.
Erica Rahal?
I am speaking on behalf of Erica Rahal. This is the note she left for me. I'm going to read it as if I'm her. I have three children currently attending school in our district. My oldest is ninth grade at LBHS, and my two younger, one at TOW in fifth and second grade. Aside from being a wife, mom of three, and caretaker for my oldest daughter, I'm the PTA council president who oversees all four schools in our district and a school power trustee. I'm a former TOW teacher as well. I thoroughly enjoy being an active community member and involved parent. I interact daily with parents and guardians at all four school sites. This is why I am here tonight. I wanted to welcome our new board members, Sheri and Howard, and express my gratitude to the incumbent officers, Jim D. and Joan. Thank you for the work you have done and that you will continue to do for our schools. I appreciate your dedication to all students in our district. As you begin this new journey together, I would like to encourage your attention to be focused on students. Please listen and collaborate with our families. Our voices are relevant and pertinent. We want to see our children thrive, grow, and succeed, however that may look for each child. Your leadership positions offer you the opportunity to make positive, constructive impacts on all students and LBUSD. As we begin 2025 with a shift in leadership on the school district side, it is imperative that you five work together to maintain continuity of the district's long-term goals, such as a learner profile framework, where things like collaborative, constructive students, empowered learners, empathetic citizens, and so on are the epitome of the skills we want our children to graduate high school with and enter the world with these components. I would like to ask that you continue to adhere to the current facilities master plan, which is comprised of years of research, an effort to look to the future of how our schools can be at the cutting edge in all aspects. Lastly, I would like to thank you for listening. I look forward to building a positive relationship with you on behalf of the families and stakeholders that I am here representing.[1630.71][1630.71][applause]
Jeff Rodesheimer, and then Emily Rolfing.
I'm Jeff Rodesheimer. This is about 30 minutes later than I thought I would be speaking. I'm not sure exactly why we didn't follow the agenda, but I like following agendas, and I love following process. This election saw an influx of special interest money into the campaigns, driven by a small but vocal minority focused on short-term, not-in-my-backyard goals instead of our students' long-term success. In fact, during the campaign, misinformation was used that misled voters. As an example, a core member of one special interest group wrote in Laguna Beach Independent on October 25th, "Should the school district administration really brag about recent statewide testing results? After all, it shows our kids received a C+ in English, 79%, C- in math, 70%, and D in science, 65%. No one should be content with barely passing, because we want to fund and deserve more for our kids." Then, unbelievably, goes on to say, "Using marketing spin subset of data is a huge disservice to parents, kids, and taxpayers." Well, in fact, he completely left out the fact that Laguna Beach Unified was ranked number one in that Orange County test, or the California test, number one in Orange County. The test scores, on average, were 20 to 25% higher than the Orange County average. Number one in Orange County. That is a fact. Just using the percentages as if they're letter grades, which they're not, is the definition of marketing spin. Now that the election is over, I urge everyone to refocus on what truly matters: student success. For example, in 1993, despite record-low enrollment, even to this day, the school board then invested in building the Current Pool. That facility helped athletes gain Ivy League scholarships and scholarships to other prestigious universities and universities across the land. Today, Laguna Beach competes with schools offering much more modern facilities. Let's modernize to ensure every student thrives, not just the pool, all facilities. But by the way, no one in my family uses that pool. I just know it's important for this community. The next school board president needs to understand what has already been discussed and have continuity with previous boards and the master plan. Let's focus on what truly matters: supporting every student every day with the resources and facilities they need.
Good evening, members of the board, superintendent, staff, student board reps, and the LBUSD community. My name is Emily Rolthing, and I'm a parent of three LBUSD students, the daughter of a public school teacher, and high school soccer coach, an active volunteer, and a deeply engaged member of our school community. I'm going to start by welcoming our new board members and thanking you for stepping up to serve our students, family, and staff. Your leadership has a profound impact on our district, and I appreciate the time, energy, and dedication you bring to this important role. I'm here tonight because the changes our board and district are facing, particularly the upcoming departure of our superintendent and this period of transition, will directly affect our students. As a parent, I, along with others, emphasize that these changes must be handled with care, unity, and leadership that prioritizes stability for our students. This is why I feel it is important to ask the following things of this board. I firmly believe in the power of a united board that works collaboratively with each other and the broader community. The focus must remain on the students, prioritizing their needs while ensuring the voices of the families you serve are heard and valued. During this time, I believe continuity in leadership is critical. With the loss of our valued superintendent, a leader who helped us navigate disruptions, expand programs, and achieve goals beyond expectations, we cannot afford unnecessary upheaval. I ask that you elect a board president with the experience and leadership skills necessary to guide us through this transition with care. Specifically, I am in support of Joan for this role. Her experience will provide a steady hand and stability needed to maintain the district's long-term goals, which were years in the making and reflect input from the entire school community. As an experienced board member, she has a deep understanding of our LCAP process, district goals, and established programs, allowing her to maintain focus on their success. As both an educator and parent of an LBUSD school-aged child, Joan brings an important representation and perspective to the demographic that you serve. In my experience, she has been open to dialogue and thoughtful discussion, carries herself with a calm and collected demeanor, and consistently demonstrates her passion for student success and advocacy. Finally, I want to reaffirm that these comments come from myself and a dedicated, engaged group of stakeholders, men and women with children at every LBUSD school site. We are committed to remaining involved and invested because we understand how vital this board's work is to the success and well-being of our students and staff. I look forward to seeing what this board will accomplish together and trust that you will continue to advocate on the behalf of all students, listen to families, and uphold the trust placed in you. Thank you.
George Weiss, and then Meredith McMahon.
Thank you. I have very brief comments. I served on the city council for four years, and my chief goals was to promote accountability and transparency. And I think that's been lacking in our city government for a very long time. And I think Dee Perry is one person who's been trying to achieve those goals on the board for many years, and has been marginalized as a result. And I hope that down the road, that those two pillars, transparency and accountability, are things all the board members will support. And I know that Howard and Sherry, congratulations on being voted in. Jan Vickers, thank her for her service over the years as well. But I don't believe in unanimity on anything. I think everybody has their own ideas about what's good and bad. What comes together is the leadership brings those people together to get a common compromise on everything that's possible, not on achieving a goal that's predetermined. So I want to congratulate Howard and Sherry again, and welcome the new board members, and to act in a positive way, you know, for the future of our students. I had a son who graduated in 2008. I don't have any kids in the school district, but I have an interest in our education of all the kids in this city. Thank you.
My name is Meredith McMahon. I have two kids, one at Top of the World and one at Thurston. I can currently serve as the PTA president of Top of the World, and I'm a longtime Laguna Beach resident and a daughter of a former teacher in this district. First, I want to welcome the new board members and express my gratitude for your service. Your role is vital to the success of our students, families, and staff. Your decisions have a profound and lasting impact, and we clearly and deeply appreciate your commitment to representing all students in our district. As you take on this support and responsibility, I urge you to keep the focus on students and prioritize the voices of the families you serve. The board's strength lies in unified collaborative governance. When you work together, free from outside agendas and committed to the collective good, you ensure the best outcomes for our students and stakeholders. Given the challenges ahead, continuity and leadership is critical. With our superintendent stepping down, strong and stable governance is more important than ever. I respectfully ask that Joan be appointed to board president. Her experience will provide the steady leadership needed to maintain progress on the district's long-term goals, goals shaped with significant input from our school community and partners. It's essential to acknowledge the incredible work that's been done. Despite challenges like COVID, our students have rebounded academically thanks to targeted interventions, data-driven decisions, and expanded programs. This reflects the district's commitment to excellence and adaptability. We're also grateful for the facility's master plan, including the approved pool remodel, which will serve students and the community for years to come. Reconsidering this project would not only delay its benefits but increase costs. Finally, I speak on behalf of many engaged stakeholders, parents, volunteers, and community members who are deeply invested in the success of the district. We expect trustees to uphold their responsibilities, advocating for all students, staying informed on legislative issues, and building positive relationships with representatives at all levels. Thank you for your dedication and your continuing to put students and families first. We look forward to seeing the positive impact of your leadership.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Kiesis. I'm a resident of this town. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'd like to thank Howard Hills and Sherry Morgan for putting the time and energy into running for the position that you were elected. It was a difficult contest. You won it fairly, and I think everybody in attendance should be supporting you and the board as a whole as we go forward to make Laguna the best it can be. Thank you.
My name is Eva Pauling, and I'm a parent of a sixth grader here at Thurston and first grader at Top of the World. I'd like to extend a welcome to our new school board members, Howard Hills and Sherry Morgan. I have confidence that you will both dedicate yourselves to representing and advocating for what is best for our students, rather than as individual members pursuing separate agendas backed by special interest groups. As this board moves forward, it is crucial that you operate as a unified team. The decisions you make in your roles will have a significant impact on the students, families, and staff here at LBUSD. However, the primary reason I am speaking today is to respectfully request that the board appoint Joan as its president. The board's effectiveness is maximized when its focus is on collaboration with a clear dedication to the students and stakeholders who rely on it. In light of the upcoming transition with the departure of our superintendent at the end of the month, stability in governance is more important than ever. This is a time when strong leadership is needed, and I encourage the election of a board president with the experience necessary to guide us through this transition. That person is Joan. We must prioritize maintaining the continuity of our district's long-term goals, goals that have been years in the making and shaped by meaningful input from our school community and organizational partners. Together, we can continue to build on the foundation we've established, ensuring that our students' needs remain at the heart of our decisions. While it is unfortunate that the parents of this district had no voice in the leadership change with Dr. Valoria's departure, I want to make it clear that many of us are deeply concerned and devastated by the course of action this board's mere existence has set into motion. We have lost a superintendent whose leadership has been nothing short of exemplary. Under his guidance, the district stayed ahead of the curve navigating the complexities of the pandemic with agility and foresight. Despite these unprecedented obstacles, the superintendent led the district through a swift academic recovery, with students making impressive progress at a pace that reflects a strong responsive system capable adapting to real-time needs. This success was driven by a focus on targeted interventions, data-driven decision-making, and continuous support for both students and staff. The superintendent also expanded programs and learning opportunities, helping LBUSD exceed its goals and maintaining our district's reputation as an exceptional place for education. Our students and families have already experienced significant disruptions in their education and childhood due to the effects of the pandemic. Let's not let a change of leadership be another one. Thank you.
At this point, we're going to move on to the election for board president, and since we have the board members here, they cannot run that portion, so the superintendent normally runs it. Come on up. I don't have the card.
I gave it to Anna Karen.
Oh, sorry. I got it under pool. You have both. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Shaheen Sheikh-Saddal. I'm a parent in the district. I have a Thurston middle schooler and also a high schooler. I'm the former TOW PTA president and the former Thurston PTA president. First, I want to welcome the newly sworn in board members. Thank you for your commitment to our students, families, and staff. Your role is incredibly important, and we trust you will keep the focus on the needs of all of our students. As we begin this year, leadership continuity is critical, especially with the superintendent transition at the end of the month. I believe board member Malcheski should be appointed board president. She has the experience and collaborative spirit needed to guide us through this challenging time. We need strong, steady leadership that unites the board and ensures we stay focused on the needs of our students. There is no mandate for significant change. The two new board members received 23% of our votes each, while the next two candidates received 22 and 20% of the votes respectively. This demonstrates that our community wants to continue the work we've been doing to support our students, families, and staff. Furthermore, we must consider the unique responsibilities of the board president, a position that works directly with the district's lawyer. Respectfully, given that member Perry has sued the district twice, she has a history of litigation instead of working through disagreements, and it would be inappropriate for her to hold this critical role. We need a president who can build trust and maintain a positive working relationship with the district's legal team. Member Malcheski's leadership will provide the stability we need. Our district has already faced significant disruptions, and we cannot afford to derail the progress we've made. We've seen tremendous academic recovery post-COVID, being recently recognized as the top-performing unified school district here in Orange County, and it's important to maintain that momentum. I do ask that the board appoint member Malcheski as board president. Let's work together as a unified board to ensure our students continue to thrive and our community remains a leader in education. And I just wanted to add, let us also be exemplars of civility. We have students in this room and a student board rep, and we need to do better by them. Thank you.
These will be the last two, Gary Kasich and then John Alden.
Well, you can come if you want. Good evening. My name is Gary Kasich. Sorry that Jan and Kelly Osbourne couldn't be here tonight. I wanted to thank them for their term of service. Welcome back, Jim, Joan, and Dee to the dais, and congratulations, Sherry and Howard, on your election. Your campaign was run on a variety of topics. This was a pretty clear election. It was based on change, it was based on transparency, and a better working relationship with the cities. It was a very clear opportunity for the voters to decide. And elections have consequences. You ran on a platform of change. Change isn't bad, nor is disagreement bad. Much of it during the campaign talked about people were disagreeing. Disagreements are merely differences of opinion. I spent a lot of time in the corporate world of very large corporations, and we looked for people who would disagree. That's how you find out what the best decisions are for you. So this common thread of everybody following the same path with no disagreement is not good leadership. Good leadership is finding the differences of opinion and coming to a common solution. So do not be afraid for differences of opinion. This board is very different than past boards. It's going to be different. It's going to look different, and it's going to behave different. The voters voted for change, so let's keep that in mind. I look forward to everybody working as a group. I look forward to the changes coming forward, and I think we've got the right group here. As far as the superintendent and the change, I just got to say it, the prior board fired the superintendent. It wasn't a decision... And all this is based on anticipation of what's going to happen. A lot of the comments tonight, people are concerned in anticipation of what's going to happen. You deserve a chance to show this community what you can do, and I'd like to see you do it. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll now move forward with the election of the board president for 2025.
I move that we nominate Joan for president, since I represent the PTA.
Be happy to put in nomination your choice.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
I'd like to nominate Dee Perry.
Can only have one motion on the floor at a time, so we need to continue with this motion first. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have some discussion on this. I, recently, I've been watching the work Joan's done on the board since she got here. She's one of the most competent and intelligent professionals I've ever met, and I have the greatest admiration and respect for her. I disagree with her on a lot of things from time to time, but she's a very worthy... She's very... I don't consider her an adversary, but she's a very worthy person to have to argue and debate with, and I look forward to working with her. I think that, you know, when people come to the board, when people come to the board, whether they get appointed or whether they get elected, you go through a process of learning. And I think that there is a leadership place for each member of this board, and I think that when we get through with our organizational meeting, I think some of the concerns and interests about leadership and seasoned leadership will be answered. And so I wouldn't be voting for Joan to be president, but I think, and I think the fact that a lot of people got organized to come in here and support her is a tribute to her, and I think that we should recognize that the community has a high regard for her, and I think that's important, and I personally do look forward to working with her in the months and years ahead.
So I'm actually going to say a couple of things about the nomination. I just want to say a few things to articulate what I want to accomplish, but also because I think there's really minimum requirements for the role. I mean, our bylaws are clear that the president has a, excuse me, has a role to play, and it spells out what some of those tasks are. But we have a really complicated year ahead of us. The president needs to facilitate the board getting through a very busy agenda, staying on task and focused, acting with decorum, and having a clear, shared commitment to the students and the teachers who serve them. But that agenda will move quickly into appointing an interim superintendent and conducting a search for a permanent superintendent in a context where the larger community feels uncertain about all of these recent changes. Boards get new superintendents all the time. Neighboring districts have recently done it with significant public relations problems. In Orange and Capistrano districts, the lack of transparency and the lack of collaboration led to a recall vote, new legislation regarding superintendent appointments... led to a recall vote, new legislation regarding superintendent appointments, community distrust. I know we all agree we don't want to be in the news for similar reasons, but I would like to develop an open and transparent process, which was where this meeting started, so that students, teachers, and the larger community have trust that the board is working together on behalf of our students. More generally, the president has to ensure our board always puts the students first, works in collaboration with the professionals and the schools who are doing the work, and is mindful of the larger community as part of that context. I'm just a parent who wants the best education possible for our kids, and I hope that we can work together to bridge gaps and promote unity. I have reached out to both of the new board members to try to do that. We've met, we've talked about differences. I love disagreement, as you could tell at the beginning of the meeting. I totally agree that that's how things move ahead. I'm really good at it. But I also think that it's important that we figure out how to build bridges and work together, and, you know, I'm very committed to doing that. And it's going to be a tough, complicated year, and I want to do that in a way that has complete and full transparency so that the board has this community's support.
May I be recognized? So I respect the process. I respect the fact that there's everybody that's in this room has taken the time out tonight. I say that regularly when I show up here, that if people have shown up, then what is being discussed is extremely important. If you were not able to be here at the very beginning of the meeting, right after we were sworn in, I did have something to say, and it's lengthy, I don't need to repeat it now, but I wanted to ensure everybody that this is, nobody steps into this role with anything but the kid's interest in heart. And I know I would not be sitting here if I were not passionate about this district, about the education that our children receive. I've had four kids go through the district. I still have a student enrolled in this district. She's a senior in high school, so I'm not out of the loop. I have nieces and nephews. I think that I've been watching this board, I've been in this boardroom for 14 years. If we are asking to restore governance and get back to process, then I respectfully have a lot of respect for Joan as well. I've had, we had a four-hour meeting that we thought was going to be an hour and a half, and next thing you know, it's 2 o'clock. So we had a lot to talk about, and I thought it went really well. We spent time together at CSBA. I think that in an effort to restore governance, to restore the trust in the process, I would like to see us go back to a rotation of the board president and starting from scratch where we have overlooked people that were positioned to take over a role. And I think with anything, one of the things that we're trying to teach our kids is that we don't have to be perfect. We don't have to have all the answers, and we don't have to have all of the skills going into a situation, but there's training, there's guidance, and as a community, we can, we need to come together and start supporting each other instead of spending our time tearing each other apart, because it doesn't serve anyone well. And so if we're looking at being a good example for our students, I think it's really important that we realize that governance has a lot of steps to it, and we shouldn't be jumping around and jockeying for, and politicizing whose turn it is, and realize that if we come together and support each other, we will all rise together. And so for that, I will not be voting for Joan this evening. Thank you.
Any further comment? No, okay. All those in favor of voting for Joan as president?
Aye.
And opposed?
Nay.
Motion fails.
I make the motion for Dee Perry.
School board?
Free by Howard Hills, second by Jim. Kelly?
Yeah. I would make a couple of comments about my motion, and in doing so, you know, it's funny, I remember years ago, I actually, over a period of 20 years, attended more school board meetings than anybody but Sheri. And I remember getting very frustrated listening to school board members say, listen, we know you don't understand why we're doing what we're doing, but please, trust us. We're, we know what we're doing, and we're doing what we think is best for the students. And I would go, no, no, I want to know what you're doing and why you're doing it. And so I'm up here tonight, and I'm sitting here, and I can understand that you may be seeing something that you think's going on up here, but I know that what you think you're seeing is not what's actually going on here, because I know some things that you don't know. And so I'm not going to be like those school board members that used to frustrate me, and I'm going to tell you, you, it may have seemed a little bit strange tonight. I came into this meeting tonight with a real commitment, that I didn't want to have a, I didn't want to have acrimony. I wanted to have things go smoothly. But the fact of the matter is that because of the circumstances under which the superintendent is transitioning out of his superintendency, and because of the circumstances that existed with respect to the people who should have been the current president and the current clerk presiding over this meeting and/or presiding over part of this meeting, because of those circumstances, when you came in here tonight and this meeting was called to order, we were not duly constituted in accordance with the State Education Code, and we were not duly constituted according to the bylaws of this district. And so you could say, boy, that guy Howard Hills, man, he really, he really rushed everybody into a closed meeting. Howard Hills alone does nothing. No member of the board, Joan's absolutely right earlier when she said, we act as a board. I didn't rush anybody anywhere, but I did, I will tell you this. I advocated for the students of this community by saying, American civics matter, math matters, science matters, English language matters, history matters, but American civics matters too. And I took an oath a little bit earlier this evening to uphold the Constitution and laws of the United States. I take that oath seriously, and we were not duly constituted in accordance with the rule of law. And I didn't come in here and announce that and create a confrontation about it. I didn't come in and say, I'm Howard Hills, and I'm going to come in here and tell everybody what they're going to do. But I did have a sense of profound urgency about getting us into closed session so that we could come out of closed session and be duly constituted, and we will not be duly constituted. We will not be duly constituted until we elect a board president to preside over this proceeding.
Ready for the vote? All those in favor to elect Dee Perry as president of the Board of Education?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, thank you very much. I really appreciate this opportunity. I know that I am not a typical board president. I am not as eloquent as all of the other board members. We each have our own strengths, but my hope is that we can come together and set a terrific example of a board with a variety of opinions and ideas that's able to work together with respect for the good, of course, number one, of our students, and also for our parents, staff, and community. I will absolutely try my best, and together with this board and a new superintendent, let's see what we can accomplish. Now, I'd like to, I'd like to open nominations for clerk.
I'd like to nominate Howard Hills. Oh, sorry. Oh, I didn't hear you. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the motion. Is there, I didn't hear the motion, my apologies. Could you repeat, could you repeat the nomination, please?
Discussion?
I didn't hear the motion. Could, could...
The motion, we made, we're having a discussion now. It was seconded for Joan to become clerk.
Thank you.
If there's no discussion, let's call for a vote. All in favor?
Nay.
Is there a nomination, another nomination for clerk?
I nominate Sheri Morgan to be the clerk of the board.
I second the nomination.
I'd actually like to decline. I would like to nominate Howard Hills. Yes, because I think that from a governance standpoint, I think that one of the problems that I know I ran on was that there was a lot of issue with governance. While I think the majority of the community believes that the governance protocol of the board was seamless and always accurate, I spend a lot of time studying the governance bylaws and policies as well, and I would disagree on many occasions, and I think it would be a really good practice for us to have a different type of leadership right now. We have an educator as the president, which we've had a board full of educators for many, many years. I don't know if all of you are aware of that, but all of the educate, all of the board members that we've had for the last at least 10 to 14 years has been strictly educators. And right now, you have a constitutional attorney on the board.
Board member Morgan, we need a second before you can discuss. Sorry.
Okay, there you go. See, that's why I shouldn't be the clerk.
Board, yeah, board member Morgan made a motion for...
So you can vote for me. You can vote, I'll say no.
Is anyone second the motion?
Second, I second it for Howard Hills.
So my comments are what I just said before it was seconded.
Any more, further discussion?
As I was, sorry, before, before what I was saying is that I think that it's really nice to be able to have an educator as the president, but then also have a constitutional lawyer that clearly knows the laws better than I do, helping to support the role of the president. I think that there's a lot of governance issues that will become clearer as we move forward, and you all give us a chance to do our job and to show you that we are about the students, we're about our families, but we also represent the community as a whole. And I think it's very important that we bring fresh energy and a fresh perspective to the leadership of this board, and I think by having a constitutional attorney that is not the attorney for the board but just knows how it works, supporting our president would be a great opportunity for the community. Thank you.
Well, I really didn't want to be clerk, but I will say this. When people were speaking a little bit earlier tonight, I was listening very carefully to what people were saying, and I was trying to, trying to get access to the Brown Act on my phone or call the, call the board's lawyer, because I wanted to comment on a couple of the things that were said, and everybody up here on the panel said, oh, no, you can't comment during public comments. And I go, no, actually, you can. The Brown Act, the provisions of the Brown Act that relate to comments on non-agenda items does allow the president of the board and the members of the board, on their own initiative, to comment on the comments that are being made.
I know the agenda, we're voting for the clerk.
I know that, and I'm, I'm speaking to the subject of why I may reluctantly accept the role of being clerk.
I haven't heard it.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, I didn't, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt Joan when she was talking about her candidacy, and I don't know why you're interrupting me and talking about my candidacy.
I'm trying to get you elected, and so we can move on with the agenda.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that, but if I'm going to do this, I would like to express myself, if that's okay with you. But at any rate, tonight hasn't gone the way I thought it was going to go in terms of us showing how, well, we can get along and work together. But, you know, the fact of the matter is, this is healthy. It may not seem healthy, it may not seem fun, but we are making progress, and we're getting the work of this board done, and I just, I will comment. I didn't comment because I couldn't get ahold of the lawyer to make sure I was right, but then he got back to me and said, yeah, you're right, you can comment during the comments on non-agenda items. So I'll just say this. You know, you don't, all I'll say is this, is that there were comments that were made earlier about electing somebody with experience to be the leader, and we just elected somebody that was a special education teacher in this district for 35 years as president of the board. Last thing I wanted to do, and some comments were made about her suing the district, and I'm not going to get into it right now, but I'm going to tell you, I got, I'm going to make a commitment to you right now. The story of those two lawsuits is going to be told, and there's going to be some truth and reconciliation about what's gone on in this district over the last 20 years. And it's, so we're not going to look back, we're not going to, we're going to stay focused on the future and the future of the kids and the future of the students, but there are lessons to be learned that are relevant to the future of the kids. And so, anyway, I do have, people were talking about, do you have enough experience? Well, I've worked for the US Congress, I've worked for the White House, I've worked for the Justice Department, the State Department. I know a little bit about governance, and so if I am elected clerk, I will use all of my talents and all my skills, and I'll devote the time and energy that I've been devoting to this school district for the last 65 years.
All in favor, Mr. Hills is clerk?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
It passes. How, three to two, Howard Hills will be our new clerk. Next, we, we move on to item six... Yeah, item, item 6D, appointment of secretary to the Board of Education. As we know, this is usually the superintendent, but as we don't have a superintendent, we need to appoint a secretary.
I nominate Victoria Weber to take on this role until the point at which we have a superintendent and can reconsider.
I second.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, I would like, I would like to say one thing. There was some discussion tonight about superintendent's departure and about the processes that were in that results in the fact that the bylaws of this board say that we're supposed to elect the superintendent to be the secretary. We just deviated from our bylaws and elected Victoria Weber because we were forced to do that by the way this process and this transition has been managed, just as Sheri and I were forced to go down and take our oath last Friday so that we could avoid a situation where there could be no quorum, so this meeting would have been called off. So the thing about it is, I'm not going to get into it, but I'll just tell you this. Go look at section 35150 of the State Education Code. That provision is a provision that the legislature enacted in 2024 to deal with a situation that existed in Orange School District, where the super, new board came in, they didn't like the last board, and they fired the superintendent when she was out of town, didn't even give her a hearing. And so the legislature passed a new law that says when there's a new board members and they come in, they can't just fire the superintendent. You have to give the, the board, you have to give the new board and the superintendent a cooling-off period so they can see if they can work together. That's what the legislature decided. That's the model of transition that our legislature adopted.
Does this have anything to do with the motion? Does this have anything to do with the motion to make Victoria Weber?
Yes, it does, because I'm explaining why we have to deviate from our bylaws.
Yes, we have to deviate and appoint someone, we're doing so.
No, but the bylaws, no, I don't think you understand. The bylaws say the board shall appoint the superintendent to be the secretary. And so we're not doing that right now. We're appointing Victoria, which I'm really glad we're doing, and I'm glad she's here to serve. But I think this community owes an explanation of what is going on here. So I'll wrap it up since, you know, I'll just say this. The previous board did not follow the model that the legislature provided in section 35150. They did something else. They ended the superintendency of the former superintendent without allowing that cooling off period that the legislature's model allowed, where we would have, you know, there would have been a process where Dr. Valoria and the new board would have worked together, and there's, what the legislature said, you can't fire the superintendent for 31 days after the organizational meeting. So the, the, the previous board did not follow that model. What they did is they terminated the superintendent, and then they extended him after their term for 31 days into our term. And the result of that was that we ended up, where we ended up tonight, with no president, no clerk, and we ended up with nobody to call the meeting to order as required by the bylaws. And so the point is, we are now just getting to the point now with the election of the new president, new clerk, where we can now go into an organizational meeting. But before people say, oh, the superintendent left, or whatever, or why he left, the fact of the matter is, if the board had followed the model that the legislature provided, we, we might be in a completely different situation right now than we are. And this is where we are, so I, I support the...
The board followed council's recommendation, Howard.
What's that?
The board followed council, our council.
No, I understand that.
So I'm, I'm just letting you know, we followed what we were told by the council of the board.
No, listen, the, the fact of the matter is...
Okay, this is not an agenda item, and you are bringing up a point that has nothing to do other than letting people know why we are appointing Ms. Weber to do this. We do not have to have this discussion, and it's inappropriate, because it's not on the agenda.
Did you wanna, did you want to, did you have appointed discussion?
Just to move on to a vote, let's keep going forward, please.
Let's vote. All in favor of Victoria, Ms. Weber serving as our secretary?
Aye.
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 Passes 5-0. You're it. Next, we will move on to the appointment of board representatives to outside organizations and committees. First, we're going to look at community coalition, which Dr. Kelly has been before, and I was the alternate. So, Dr. Kelly, do you want to continue with this?
I'd like to offer this to the new board members.
Okay. Is there a new board member who would like to be on the community coalition?
I don't have the document in front of me of their meeting dates. I know that that's with Marcy Mednick, and I, can you remind me, they meet on Tuesdays, correct? Or Mondays at 3:00, I think?
It varies.
I've been to those meetings. I can do that.
Okay.
I can do that.
Okay. Board member Morgan will serve on that committee, and what about an alternate?
Unless you would rather do it, you were the alternate last time, would you rather be on the, on the committee and I'll be your alternate?
I can be the alternate, Dee, so you can have enough to do.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kelly. Board member Kelly will be the alternate. We need a district representative for Orange County Nominating Committee and Orange County School Board Association, and an alternate. It was member Osborne, and Dr. Kelly, you were the alternate. Is there someone who would like to do this?
It's very rare for me to be the lead and basically...
Okay, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you. Alternate? I'll be an alternate. Okay. Board member Malchuski will be the Orange County nominating, on the Orange County Nominating Committee, and I will be the alternate. Laguna Beach Council of PTA. Dr. Kelly would like to continue? Is there anyone else who would... Okay.
I'd like to refer back to something that member, that President Vickers had said in December 22, December, the December organizational meeting of 2022, when member Malchuski came on board, and Madam, President Perry, I believe you were out of town, when it was talking about rotating different positions, it gives different people an opportunity to experience different things and see how our district works from different perspectives. And I think, given that member Kelly has been on the PTA council for at least three or four years now, right? I would like to suggest that someone else takes lead on that, please.
Well, I'm happy to take on the regular role, but I also think that when we don't have committees that are ours, it's important to pay some attention to the wish of the committee, and Dr. Kelly's had a good working relationship with the PTA council, and I know that they're eager to continue working with him. And it's not our committee, it's the PTA committee. So for that reason, I would support him continuing to do that. If the board is for some reason against that, I'm not quite sure why, I'm the alternate and have been and would like to take on the role of serving in the position.
Well, as I said, as, as President Vickers said in 2022, that it's beneficial, because I believe she had offered to you the possibility of joining School Power and their endowment or their, their other committee that's coming up. And member Perry was not here at the time, and you had just been inquiring as a, as a possibility, and that is when she had said that it is good for us to rotate around and have different experiences. So I would like to suggest someone else besides member Kelly, and out of no disrespect, but just as I think that it would be good, because I know when I was president at the high school in 2021, 22, member Kelly was the PTA representative. So we're talking now about three, three years, and if we're looking at reorganizing everything, we should truly reorganize and have somebody else be the lead. If no one else is willing to, I would be happy to, but it also would be good to possibly consider other members to attend different PTA meetings at different schools. So perhaps we have somebody for council, and then we have different members attend different meetings and rotate around. That would be a possibility as well.
So I'm the alternate and have not regularly attended, so I can take on that role. But again, I think the council, and it's their committee, has wanted to continue working with Dr. Kelly. If the board wants to turn that down, I would be next in line to do it, and it's not, and that would be rotating the committee.
I don't mean any disrespect by it whatsoever, and I, and I, I would encourage us not to see this as any kind of, as anything other than bringing different perspectives and different approaches to how, how we're doing things. And yes, it is PTA council's committee, but this is a board meeting of our board, and we are appointing people that we would like to have attend these meetings. And I think that if we're all conducting ourselves with respect, it shouldn't be an issue.
Well, to be clear, I mean, you've expressed your concerns. Does anyone else up here have concerns with Dr. Kelly continuing?
I think Dr. Kelly has done a marvelous job. I do understand the importance of rotating committees, though, and I think maybe a solution might be for you to be, for you to be the member and maybe Dr. Kelly to be the alternate. Laguna Beach Education Foundation for School Power. Right now, or previously, Kelly Osborne was our representative, and, Dr. Kelly, you were the alternate. So you, you would be the representative? Okay. Was previous. So Jim is volunteering to be, to be our representative. Is there someone who'd like to be an alternate? Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so that's... Let's go on to Laguna Beach Education Foundation School Power Endowment. At this point, Dr. Malchuski has been our representative, and I was the alternate.
And I would like to continue for selfish reasons, which is that I have a full-time job, and they meet at 8:00 in the morning, and it's a job, a post I can get to. But aside from that, I have a finance background, and it is a very useful committee to me, for me to be on, because I think I can contribute something to that, given, you know, my own background. So I would like to continue.
Is there anyone else who would like to volunteer as the representative? I think it makes sense, because you've only done it for one year.
This is the foundation, correct?
I was the alternate. Is there someone who would volunteer to be the alternate? Well, you were going, you're going to be the alternate for School Power, and you could be the alternate for the endowment also. That would be fine. Okay, perfect. I'm happy. The, next, we're gonna move on to the Joint Fiscal Management Committee.
Do we have a, did we identify someone that was gonna be the endowment, or is it the same for the foundation and the endowment? Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Joint Fiscal Management Committee. At this time, board member Malchuski is the representative, and Jim Bickers and Jim Kelly were the alternates.
I recommend that Mrs. Morgan and Mr. Hills do this, just because it's a very useful opportunity outside of here to ask questions about the budget, and, you know, it's with the head of the union and teachers, so it's a use, I, I learned a lot on that committee.
And that's a quarterly meeting? For an hour, it's on the, on the form, is that accurate, or?
Correct, four times a year.
I can do that.
So this committee is actually two representatives and one alternate?
Oh, okay.
I can do that.
Wonderful. Next. Oh, we need an alternate.
Dee, have you done this before? Have you done this before?
Yeah, I've done this before, but I can do it again. I'll, I'm happy to be the alternate. Okay. Next, we voted on college and career advantage, but the meeting times have changed, and Dr. Kelly can no longer volunteer for this. So I am hoping that somebody else will volunteer to be a representative. I'm a representative. We need another one for career and college advantage. It's a great committee.
Is it just the two meetings that are listed on the form, or is there more next year?
There are, there are probably about four meetings a year. They meet from 5:00 to 7:00 in the evening. There are many other things that they would like you to attend, but you don't have to.
Since, since member Malchuski is the alternate, would you like to take that committee on, since it's in the evening and I can be an alternate?
It's not clear.
Howard?
No, we're talking about the representative, we need a second representative.
Howard, are you a representative on any committee other than the, the joint budget one? You're an alternate on a couple, so maybe it would be useful for you to do your second committee.
Spread the love. You'll really enjoy it. I would take yes. I appreciate a yes for an answer.
I would be happy to be the alternate, alternate, if that's what we need.
Fantastic. Great.
Howard, you can't be sick.
Joan, are you resigning as the alternate for that?
Oh, I am.
Okay.
All right, I know there were ideas for some other positions, but we don't have them right now. That may come back at a later date.
We do have the ad hoc facilities master plan, which is still on the list, and I'd like to be a part of that.
Okay. All right. So it will be board member Morgan and board member Malchuski, with board member Hills the alternate.
Nothing's scheduled at this time, but if certain requests from the city or from the school board were to come up, we could potentially meet sometime in the future.
Now we're to item F. We need to set meeting dates and times and place for 2025. Are there any conflicts?
Why was the meeting in June on a Monday, June 9th? What is the reasoning behind that?
Graduation.
Is it not typical, then, to maybe have the meeting the week after, rather than have two meetings in the same week? Or two meetings within five days of each other, four days of each other? One is a recognition meeting the week before?
That is the athletics dead weeks, immediately following the end of school. So previously, board members did not want to have meetings that week because they were gone on vacation. So that is why we schedule it on the Monday, because Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday are all end-of-year activities and very difficult for everyone to get together.
January 23rd.
Joan, I recall you had a conflict with a meeting at one point when you guys were proposing this calendar in August. Does that still stand? What week was that? And is that, is there any other conflicts come up with conferences or anything like that? Joan? You had had conferences conflicts when the calendar was originally explored in August? Glad we could accommodate, great.
January 30th is the date you're suggesting to move to. That is typically the superintendent symposium, so if we have a new superintendent, whether they be interim or regular, they will most likely be gone, and that's why we, plus, that's the fifth Thursday, but you guys could discuss.
What date was being discussed? I missed that, sorry.
I will also be gone on January 30th if we move it to that.
January 23rd works for me.
February 6th, I have a conflict. And I would really like to be at the governance meeting.
Oh, that's the governance meeting?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Well, we need everybody there for the governance meeting.
I think so.
Yeah. So do we want to find an alternate day so it doesn't have to be a Thursday?
Are you talking about, are we still working on the January 23rd meeting?
Yeah. Was that the governance meeting?
No.
That's February 6th.
Oh, okay.
I have no conflicts with any of the dates that have been proposed last August, so I'm good approving the calendar as is.
So January 23rd is just a regular board meeting?
Correct.
Okay. So is it possible to call in or do you want us to try and move it to a different day of the week?
I'm going the 17th through the 24th.
Okay. So I think since other people are gone on the 30th, I don't know if there's a, do you have any suggestions?
Are you at a location where you could call in?
I don't know.
Okay.
I certainly don't want to get in practice of having a, a board of four, but I know it's been done before.
It comes up. Board members need to miss meetings at times. Oh, that might be a possibility.
I can check, but invitations may have already gone out to students and staff, but I can check first thing in the morning.
Yeah, that would be a, yeah.
If that works, we'll switch it. If...
And can we look for a different date than February 6th for our governance meeting?
If we switch the January 9th to the January 23rd, is there any action that needs to be done on that after this meeting or are we gonna be approving the calendar with the possibility of switching events on the 9th to the 23rd?
It doesn't matter.
That, that's what you're approving now. So we would make, switch those two dates and then you would be voting and approving on all these changes.
Got it.
No, yeah, that, yes. And then February 6th.
February 6th.
Governance meeting, if there's a conflict, are you on that week or can you...
Yeah, I'm gone till the 10th.
Okay. Does it work to do it on February 13th?
That's a regular proposed board meeting.
Oh, I see. Yeah. I just noticed it on my schedule.
Then we go to midweek break. What about Monday, the 24th?
February 24th?
Mm-hmm.
Is that the, no, okay. I can do that.
I can do that.
Monday, the 24th for our governance meeting, does that work for everyone?
Howard and Sherry, February 24th, Monday?
My answer is yes to everything. I just want, I feel bad about making all these people sit through this. I mean, should do this then, we need something.
I can do the 24th.
How close are we to getting done?
Are you requesting an evening meeting for the governance or, because that, that'll affect potentially getting locations. So we could...
How long is it typically?
At least two hours.
This goes through policies?
No, this is governance protocols.
So it's Brown Act and...
So we could maybe do a one to three or a two to five?
Is this meeting open to the public to come and attend and also gain insight on how, is this meeting open to the public that they can come and gain insight on how the Brown Act works and governance practices?
Depends on what you're agendizing exactly. The Brown Act presentation, yes, if you have any closed session actions, but normally governance is open session.
I think it's benefit, I know I've benefited from attending those meetings in the past and I know some of them have been study sessions where we could participate and some have been more open board meetings where we just observed. But I do think regardless either way, it's very beneficial for the community to have the opportunity to participate.
They have to be open.
So my question is, time of day?
Timing might affect when, timing might affect who can attend, whether they can attend in the evening or during the day. So perhaps it stays at the regular scheduled time.
I'll, I'll see what I can book at the sites.
Okay. I don't either.
Okay.
Okay. Move on to annual...
I made a motion on this one.
I, I move that we accept the meeting dates with those, with the change for the governance meeting and the possibility of switching the recognition meeting to the 23rd if invitations have not yet gone out.
Certainly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're to item G, annual reminders. I think this might be you, Mr. Dixon.
Sure. These are just annual reminders for the board. The first one having to do with the option to repurchase the Aliso property, which is the old elementary school down in South Laguna Beach and the option to repurchase, which I have in front of me here, as well as the dollar bill that we keep on file at the business office backed up with a coin dollar bill just in case to repurchase the property in 2041 for $1. The second reminder is just in regards to our facility repair and replacement program. We will have an item later on the agenda for the transfer related to this, but essentially the FERC, as we refer to it as the acronym, is, serves as our deferred maintenance program for large maintenance and replacement projects with the next one coming up being the Laguna Beach High School Stadium Field and Track. So that's it for the reminders.
Any questions?
When was that, the coin dollar added to the list? Just kidding.
Thank you for that. Aye. Moving on to reports, student board members or member. Kate.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. To start off for El Moro, the students were excited to participate in several VAPA activities, including performances for hospitality night as well as a combined choir concert with TOW, TMS and LBHS. LBH Dance was also able to collaborate with El Moro. During an assembly, they shared their talents with the elementary students. Additionally, the fall book fair has just finished up and all the students are eagerly, eagerly anticipating the annual PJ and Ha, Coco Day hosted this Friday by the Sea Lion Squad. During this month, the TOW students had the opportunity to attend many exciting field trips, including a trip to the mission in San Juan Capistrano and the Environment Nature Center in Newport Beach. It was made, amazing for the students to have firsthand experiences right within our community. For Thurston, the pals and ASB are teaming up with the high school to head to the OC ropes course after the break. This course is all about building connections, learning to work together and building leadership skills. It is fully funded by the Tobacco Use Prevention Education. And then finally, as the semester comes to a close, students at LBHS are gearing up for finals, which begin tomorrow. There's been a lot of school spirit for the holidays as last week's Spirit Week hosted by ASB featured themed dress up days such as ugly Christmas sweaters and ski lodge attire along with hot chocolate at lunch. Throughout December, ASB has also been running a successful toy drive. Additionally, our ASB held a great staff holiday breakfast on Friday and LBHS PTA took care of our faculty last week with coffee, treats and food. It was a big week for the arts department as LBH's dance put on an amazing winter performance, which included a special act from students at TOW and El Moro. We also had the LBH's band concert last Tuesday. And then finally, many LBH's students were recognized for their achievements at the Breaker Awards reception. Thank you.
Thank you for that report, Ms. Hennessy. And I just want to tell you that in 1969, probably before your parents were born, I was the student rep for Laguna Beach High School on the school board here. So I really care about your report and I care about your representation of the students here and I really appreciate you being dedicated and coming here tonight and making your report to us.
Thank you.
Mr. Dixon, do you have a report?
No, I think I started with the board.
Okay. Sorry.
Thank you, President Perry. We had a joint report, but in the essence of time, we're shortening it to, we need to take this moment to acknowledge the profound loss we experienced in our district with the passing of Coach Lance Stewart. He was a special educational instructs, instructional assistant here at Thurston. He was a dedicated coach. He got to work the last two years with his daughter and they had lunch every day, so we're grateful for that. He has been cherished, member of our community and our district for many years and a valued brother in our union. His presence will be deeply missed by both the staff and students and our thoughts and prayers and support go out to everyone during this challenging time. So we would just like you to keep him in mind during the holidays and his family because it's kind of a rough time for everybody and we miss him greatly.
Thank you.
If I can, very briefly, I'd just like to acknowledge his dedication to Laguna Beach High School and the Laguna Beach School is unparalleled, unsurpassed and he, amazing man who dedicated his life to that campus and to those kids. So thank you for your comments.
I'd like to agree with that. I know my relationship with the Stewart family goes back to the first day I pulled into town playing volleyball down at Main Beach. Their kids are some of the same ages as our kids and it is truly a loss to our community and I appreciate that you took a moment to say something. Thank you so much and our hearts go out to the Stewart family.
Thank you. We are going to have a report now out of closed session.
Are we moving, do we need to make a motion to move that because the next item is the information item?
It's, it's not on the agenda, so we need to report out. So during closed session, the board moved to prepare an employment agreement with Dr. Joanne Culver-House as the district's interim, as the district's interim superintendent effective January 1, 2025 and to announce the approval of this decision when returning from closed session, which we're doing now. The vote was approved three to two with Mr. Hills, Ms., Mrs. Morgan and Mrs. Perry voting yes and Dr. Kelly and Dr. Malcheski voting no.
I'd like to comment on my, on my support of the decision. Dr. Culver-House is a, is a member, has been, was a member of this community for a very long time. She taught in our schools for 15 years. She, when the position of superintendent opened here at the high, here at the schools, Dr. Culver-House was not considered for the superintendent position and we brought in Dr. Valoria. Both at the time had similar experiences and similar backgrounds as far as their time in the public school system. And Dr. Culver-House went on to follow Don Austin, who was a principal at the high school, who has, who went on to Palos Verdes, not Palos Verdes, Pal, no, he's at Palo Alto now, but prior to that, he was at the peninsula, Palos Verdes. Oh, I had that right. And he was there for a while and then he went on to Palo Alto. He trained Dr. Culver-House. She went on to La Habra and as the superintendent of La Habra turned a district around in a very short period of time, she went on to win Superintendent of the Year as well as Woman of the Year and was recognized for her accomplishments. Many members of the community and families in the community know Dr. Culver-House. A lot of the staff knows Dr. Culver-House. I supported this decision because I think that it would be one of the smoothest transitions for us as a district to be able to bring someone in that knows a lot of our staff, knows a lot of our families, knows how our, knows our campuses and can come in and make a positive impact right away while we position ourselves to search for a superintendent with strong community support and input. And I think that her energy and her excitement and enthusiasm for the opportunity is going to be a, a great opportunity for our community and I think that for those reasons is why I supported it.
I, I would like to, I'd like to add that just, I want everybody to understand, we were very careful about the motion that, that Secretary Weber just read. This is not a fait accompli. This is not a, it's not preemptive. Everybody in this room and everybody in this community is going to get a chance to meet her. This is not, there still will be a negotiation of a contract and the whole board acting together will act on her appointment as interim. And the, the, the fact is, is that she is, I don't have to say anything about who she is because most people in town know who she is and, and what she did when she was here. And she was principal at, did you already say she was principal at, oh, so yeah. So anyway, I just want to make it clear that this whole board is going to spend time with her and decide whether or not her contract is approved. I think the reality is that we owe it to the children of this school district who have had a superintendent leave mid-year, which is suboptimal. And so the, the reality is we need to get an interim superintendent here and to get moving with the select, the select, search for a permanent superintendent so that we recover from the dislocation of the governance process that's been resulting from this mid-year departure of a superintendent.
I voted against this action and the reason I voted against it, I have no idea who she is. I knew nothing about her and I was just presented with this is who, who they wanted to put, do this negotiation with. So I couldn't, good faith, go forward with that. I'm used to even the, what's been talked about here was not talked about in closed session. So I had to vote no. Thank you.
Yeah, I would also like to explain my own vote of no. And that's, as I discussed at the beginning of the meeting, on the agenda tonight was an agenda item to discuss the process for appointing an interim superintendent. At that point, I would have liked to have recommend that we bring in two people at, but even if it's only one, that we have a full board closed session interview of that person. I have talked to the candidate. I have not reviewed her curriculum vitae. I've seen no letter of interest yet. I haven't met her in person and I think to have a majority vote recognizing for purposes of unity and governance that two people on this board have never met this person nor reviewed her materials just completely undermines the idea that we were, we are doing this by following board processes that promote transparency and that promote unity. So that was the reason for my no vote.
I do have a letter of intent from her that came in this afternoon. If you'd like me, I can forward it to you. No, we've consulted counsel on this item and we are within...
Let's move the agenda. So we have 24 cards for speakers on this item. I'll turn them over to Mr. Hal, Mr. Hills to call, but how does the board wish to proceed?
Are we going to have the rest of the reports or we're going to speed on to the next item?
Can I make, so it was my request to bring the pool forward again tonight. So I, I want to make sure people in the room that I know are here wanting to express their concerns again, wanting to speak out in support of the existing, excuse me? So I wanted, I'd want to make sure it's known that I requested to have this brought to the board tonight. I was advised that we should just move into an organizational meeting and call it a night, but I feel that this is a very important topic. It's been extremely divisive in this community. It is an item that I think in the best interest of our community, there are, there are supporters of the smaller pool that may not have any idea of the strengths of a 45-meter project. There are elements to the 45-meter project that perhaps haven't been considered on, on the opposite side of that. I am not suggesting that anybody doesn't speak...
Excuse me, for just a minute, for Member Morgan, we're supposed to let public comment go first.
Okay. So I was just saying why we brought it forward and to encourage people that if they want to enforce their opinion of why we should keep one or the other, it's very, I think we've done that a lot.
Okay. Well...
So with the 24 cards, how does the board wish to proceed?
On the process, we would do 20 minutes. Again, the 20 minutes will extend it.
I'll move it to two. We can move it to two.
I would like to give people a chance to speak because they've prepared three-minute comments and if we need to extend it, we can. People feel strongly about this.
And I would add that since they made the mistake of making me the clerk... And I would add that since they made the mistake of making me the clerk, I'm going to be an advocate of changing the way we do this so that we don't cut people's mics off at three. At the end of three, you give them 15 seconds or 30 seconds.
This is, this is part of our governance meeting.
No, I'm just saying that that's what I'm going to recommend. Yeah, yeah. Well, okay. Alia Mariner. And Mike Mariner will follow her.
Hi, okay. Hi, everybody. I'm on the 14-and-underwater polo team. I believe that building a bigger pool can benefit us in many ways. For starters, if the pool is bigger, our water polo team can have more home games, which can be a fun thing for all citizens to come and support their local team. Our team is very dedicated to water polo. We have practice for two hours, three to four days a week, and sometimes when we get into the pool, it is freezing because the heater isn't working. And when we get out at 9:00 PM, it's freezing cold, and I can't feel my feet. If we, if we build a bigger pool, we wouldn't have to have practice so late because there will be more space to share with the other teams. And a bigger pool wouldn't just benefit us water polo players, it would benefit the whole community, senior citizens, youth, and anyone who wants to improve their something. I'm asking all of you to please think of students first. As a student here in Laguna, I can say that a lot of students here want a bigger pool.
Mike Mariner and Carrie Newell after her, after him.
Thanks, everyone, for being here tonight. Just want to thank all the educators and district employees in the room. You guys keep our district going, and I know that through COVID, you got us through a really difficult time, so appreciate your service. So round of applause for all the district employees and teachers. I think the students and the kids and the players will probably speak best for, and advocate for themselves tonight. I'll just speak really quick. As my great-grandpa first came to Laguna in 1927, my grandpa went to Laguna Beach High School, my dad went to Laguna Beach High School. I have two kids in the school district, and I remember my grandpa telling stories, building Red Guyer Field and the schoolhouse and the football field, and just the big, long picture these people took in on making investments in their communities. And I know there's like taxpayer dollars at stake. We all pay taxes. We all pay the same stuff, but you know, some of that goes towards firefighters and police stations and schools, and we don't really have a choice in that. That's how it all works in our democracy and our local system. And I realize the pool might seem like a big gazillion-dollar investment, but you know, I was at the meeting in October when the architects and the engineers did so much diligence in that plan. And I remember one of them saying that the typical school pool lasts 30 to 35 years. And I was a water polo player in the 90s at the, at the, at part of the aquatics program. It helped me pay and get through college. It was a big part of my life. But I remember when the district made that investment in the new pool, and it was a, it was a signal that like the community supported us. The community supported the next generation of kids, and there are tax dollars. Every citizen paid an extra $2, and we got a new pool, and that meant a lot. But you know, just saying really quick that like, the engineers and the designers said basically, every 30 years, you have to build a new pool anyway. So from like a taxpayer perspective, like if we have to come back here in five to 10 years and do, if we do a small update to the pool now, and then we come back in five to 10 years, and then we got to spend, it's not going to be $15 million in 10 years, it's going to be $30 million in 10 years, and it's going to be pretty embarrassing. So I just want to say like, thank you for all of your work on this, and maybe it'd be worth getting those engineers and architects back in here to really make sure we have a sense of like, what a cost of a brand-new pool would be in 10 years if we don't invest in the modernization now. So, thanks.
After Carrie, it'll be Katie Teetz.
Good evening. First of all, I want to thank the new board members and especially the current board members that are coming in for your roles. And I want to say, I want to trust each of you that you're going to keep our students and our community based in students top of mind, because I'm not seeing that tonight. Secondly, I am a Laguna Beach resident. I have two children in the public school system, both in middle school. I've been a longtime aquatics supporter, as well as a swimmer myself. This pool has given my family a sense of purpose from when my son was five years old and couldn't sit still in his seat, and he had to swim his energy out. He's a fifth-year water polo player today, and because of this, every single year, at least one youth program that feeds into our high school has to leave. My son and many of these kids sitting in the room drive six hours per week back and forth to another pool because we do not have the pool space to keep our community alive, to keep our students alive that feed into our high school program. Many of these students have been Olympians, have gotten college scholarships, have a better path in life because of this foundation, and many of these students do not want to spend six hours of drive time and sleep time that disrupt them to continue the passion for the sport. The small amount of investment it will take to keep this project on track, let alone the lack of new information that is being brought forward to even open up this topic, is absolutely disappointing for this community and for those people like you that have brought it forward. I ask we remove it from the agenda for everyone here tonight and put it to rest so we can move forward. The amount of money we will spend by deterring this, revisiting it, and the increased cost will be insurmountable, and there's no new information being brought forward. I thank you for your time. You can tell I'm passionate as many people in the room. Thank you for supporting our youth.
After Katie will be Laura Jumani.
Hello, my name is Katie Teetz. I coach girls' water polo at Laguna Beach High School, and I'm asking to please continue with the facilities plan that was approved in October. I believe there is a way forward under the current plan with the city that not only benefits the students who spend so much time in the pool, but the larger community who I see using the pool every day when I'm on deck with the students. The approved plan to build a 45-meter pool allows for much more efficient use than what is capable now. My girls' program wouldn't have to miss out on approximately three weeks of training at the beginning of our season while the boys' team competes in the CIF playoffs. It allows for uninterrupted lap swim on the weekends, where right now we're splitting pool space, and it's, it's chunked up, and it allows for earlier nights for our little ones and the families with homes nearby. I've been a part of this community for two years now. I've spent the last three semesters in the classroom at Laguna Beach High School as well. Kate is one of my students who's taking a final tomorrow morning. And I've come to understand that this community expects the best for itself, at the very least to not limit or stifle the opportunities that it extends to the students. They extend themselves in ways that we do not understand, like completely beyond some of what we would think is capable of young people. It expects the best for itself, for its students, and the larger community. What sets Laguna apart from the other places I've been is that it always steps up to deliver, and please deliver here, too. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Laura Jumani, and I'm a 24-year Laguna Beach resident and a parent of a high school senior water polo player. She's been playing water polo in Laguna Beach, starting with the age group in fourth grade, and now she's in her fourth year at high school. I'm here to support the 45-meter pool that the board unanimously approved in the October 10th meeting, and that was a 5-0 vote. And thank you to Dee Perry, and Joe Malchuski, and Dr. Kelly, as well as Jan Vickers and Kelly Osbourne for voting to approve the 45-meter pool. We appreciate that. That was the conceptual design presented on October 10th. Those plans include relocating the existing restroom and locker room building into the adjacent pool parking lot area, which would be at ground level, and sit on top of the new mechanical and storage room. One of the primary features of having a 45-meter pool is that it would allow for multiple practices for water polo and increase the ability to share the pool for use by multiple programs at the same time. It will enhance and expand its capabilities beyond the current limitations. Anything less than 45 meters will not meet the coaches' requirements to run practices together, for example, varsity and JV, or boys and girls. Another benefit of concurrent use with a separate high school locker room and community-use locker restrooms is the potential for mixed use. For example, the city's age group water polo or swim team could potentially use part of the 45-meter pool while a high school practice is using another portion of the 45-meter pool. Or community lap swimmers could get in their laps in the afternoon, which currently is exclusively used by high school programs. I believe the ed code requires the separate locker or changing rooms for community use and high school use. So it's imperative to relocate the existing locker room facility, which is also required to make enough of a footprint to house the 45-meter pool. I'm grateful for our district, for that they have the funding available to support this incredible aquatics program, and thank you for doing what's best for our kids. I ask you to please put our students first and build the previously approved 45-meter pool. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Fisher and Keta Brown. Eric Fisher, followed by Keta Brown.
Got it. Got the order now. All right. Hi. My name's Eric Fisher. I'm a 30-plus-year Laguna Beach resident. My two daughters went through the entire district program from kindergarten to high school, and I'm probably spent more time at this pool than anybody else in this building. Multiple reasons. Number one, I lap swim. I've lapped swim since the first day I moved here. Unfortunately, it's just at 6:00 in the morning on Tuesday, Thursday, because that's the only time I can swim because I work, I don't work in the city of Laguna Beach. The other times, kids learn, not learn to swim, they went to swim team there. I coached the Laguna age group water polo program for a little over six years, and for the last eight years, I'm a volunteer assistant coach on the Laguna Beach High School water polo staff. So I've seen the usage of the pool from a lot of different perspectives. I've seen it as personal as a lap swimmer. I've seen it as an age group water polo parent and coach, and I've seen it as a high school coach. And I know there was a lot of compromise, and I think disagreement can be good, compromise just to get it down to the 45-meter, working with various constituents. Not everybody got what they wanted, but I thought it was a reasonable solution. And the bottom line is, this city has an old pool that is just not suitable for the demands of the high school alone, but then you pile on the community's needs and the community's value they get out of it from, from, you know, junior lifeguard training, swim team prep, the Laguna Beach water polo program, age group program, the high school program, all the lap swimmers, all the programs they have for elderly aquatics people. There's just not enough pool to serve everybody. So having 45 meters does all these wonderful things in allowing you to be more efficient, each group to be more efficient with their time, that allows the other groups to have more time to use that resource. And looking at the dollar differences of building a 45 versus a shorter pool, and maybe not as deep of a pool, the trade-offs, to me, for the amount of additional cost, and I'm a, I'm a pretty fiscally responsible person, I'd like to think. I don't like to spend money if I don't need to, but the amount to go to 45 meters all deep, what that allows you to do as far as serving your aquatic community is huge, and I think it would be a tragic mistake to be shortsighted, go back from anything from what was approved, because I think, and then you're, you would regret that decision. It's like closet space, pool space. If you have it, you'll use it. I know this community will use it. It's been a valuable asset to this community, and I urge you to keep it as is approved. Thank you.
Hi. I am just confused as to why we're doing this, honestly. There are three board members who were part of the unanimous approval. I assume that they still feel that way, and it's done. I don't see why we're revisiting it. It was approved. It's, it's a great plan. The city, the community needs it. I'm hopeful that the city will come back for a joint use personally. I think that buying lap time is not particularly wise, but anyway, I just, I'm, I'm flummoxed as to why we're having to do this all over again. I think you, you guys made a decision. It's a good decision. We should move forward. Every, every second counts at this point because that's starting, going to start leaking here any day. Thanks.
Johnny Geiger. Johnny Geiger, and after him, Getze Rubin.
Hi, Johnny Geiger, lifelong resident here in Laguna. First off, I want to welcome the new board members and thank you to the returning. It's been a roller coaster tonight. I haven't ever been to one of these, and you better believe I'll be coming to more. This has been fun. So like I said, I grew up in town, learned to swim at the pool in the quad, the, you know, tiny little pool, and we were excited when they were building the new one. We even bought a tile. Remember going into the canyon to put that tile together to have it put up. I joined the first Laguna Water Polo Club program for kids when I was in seventh grade. So I challenge you to ours spent in that pool. I played in the high school, too. But even when that was being built, we knew it was going to be too small. But you know, we really, you know, appreciated that it was being built. And now I have kids coming through the program, a 12-year-old and a 10-year-old. When they were eight, they were staying up until 10 at night to play water polo. It was really affecting their school. We ended up moving them out of town to another program, and that program, Laguna's becoming a feeder program to private schools like Jake Sarah that actually have the facilities for the kids like that. I have videos and pictures of 30-year, or 30 kids in three lanes trying to run a practice, and it's just not effective. Almost every surrounding city has a 50-meter pool. We're asking for a 45. Newport just doubled down and is building another 45, or a 50-meter pool. No wonder they're the best in the country. But this is, you know, further than water polo. It's swimming. We have no club water, or swimming for, for youth. I was at Irvine Pool, and there was synchronized swimming. Can you imagine? Right? Not in Laguna. But, let's see. Yeah, you know, like many people have said, if we're going to do this now, let's do it, let's do it right. Otherwise, we're going to be looking back in 30 years and saying, why didn't we just do it right the first time around? Or, in this case, the second. Anybody pointing to past success of the water polo team without mentioning that a lot of those players left to go to El Toro to play, you know, they're, they're covering up the facts. The kids have been forced to go out of town to play water polo since this pool's been built. And I think the sudden interest in the pool by people who don't have kids in, in the district is really telling. This isn't a matter of children anymore. This is a community issue. You were all voted in, and I hope that you will do what you're supposed to do on the school board and support the children, and not all the community members, the silent, or the loud minority that's, you know, throwing up all the fuss about the new pool. Thank you.
And that would be followed by Jeb Brown.
Newth Morris. I've lived in Laguna Beach since 1998. I've got three kids, 12, 10, and eight. They all play water polo. My wife Claudia is on the board of, on the PTA of Thurston, and is at Top of the World every day. Actually, last night, my 10-year-old son was at a tournament in El Toro with, with Kim's daughter Elle, who was just sitting in front, and they took second place. So, which is pretty cool. Yeah. So, first time they medaled last year, their team was like losing like 18-2 or what have you. So the same core group of kids has come back, and they came within one buzzer-beating shot of taking gold. And Coach Parker assures us that we keep up the good work. By the time Junior Olympics comes around, we can be able to get a gold. And he said, that's the important one because it's heavy metal. So, you know, the town of Laguna Beach is known for a lot. It's known for restaurants and beaches, for art festivals, and various things in the canyon, a history of hippies that handcuffed themselves, the bulldozers in the can, in the canyon to keep where we're going. It's also known for world-class water polo players. It's also known for world-class water polo players. And so, when we think about all the things that we're proud of, I'm certainly proud of my kids. Everybody in this room should be proud of those kids, and the entire town should be proud of those kids, because it's a legacy on par with the other legacies that we point to. My twelve-year-old son had a tournament yesterday, too. He played for CDM. Three of the starters in the CDM team were Laguna Beach water polo kids. And as Johnny mentioned, we got starters at North Irvine, we got starters at Mission. And so, we're taking those in, now, there's, who knows? Hopefully, they'll come back in the high school, but we don't know. But if you think about, there's a bigger element in this town. This town has gotten a culture, and we were like, whatever, the town was perfect in the mid-nineteen seventies, and we dyed it in amber, and we've got a culture of fighting everything. And we really need to think about what the town's gonna look like going forward. And there's clearly a generational divide in the room. I understand this. But for the generation above us, looking towards legacy, real estate's gonna go up. And you're either gonna get families that are making a trade-off to buy-in, stretching to get here, because there is the culture and there is world-class facilities for people to raise kids in, or you're gonna get second homes. So I ask you to look what you're gonna leave, the life of people that are coming behind you. So, thank you for your time.
Jeb will be our last speaker, and then you'll need to make a motion.
Thank you very much. My name is Jeb Brown. I've lived in town for over, well, for thirty-four years. I've been a swimmer at the pool for over thirty, since it was built in nineteen ninety-three. There's been lots of talk about governance and transparency. It alludes me as to why we are currently revisiting a topic that was voted upon and unanimously approved in October of this year. And three of the current board members, which would be a majority of the board, continue to sit there, and so, but nonetheless, this was kind of clandestinely brought to everyone's attention. Our current facility is falling apart. It has to be repaired. And it's the incremental difference between a twenty, if we've got a twenty-million-dollar project we're looking at, the incremental additional cost to make a forty-five-meter pool, I would say is insignificant over the long run. The final issue I'll make, I know there's lots of concerns about noise, I live five houses down from Thurston Middle School, so I hear bells, I occasionally hear announcements, but I bought a home, five houses from Thurston Middle School. And there's been no talk of demolishing the middle school or making the middle school smaller. So I understand the needs, the concerns about noise. As Sue Kemp said, you know, we all live crammed into a town that's got fixed geographical boundaries. And so, we just have to get along, and let's approve or continue the path forward on the forty-five-meter pool. It was previously approved. It's the best thing for the community. Thank you.
Okay. It's been twenty minutes, so I need to ask for a motion to continue. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
My name is Mason Jakel, and I'm currently a freshman on the high school water polo program. And I've been in the Laguna Beach aquatics program since I was eight years old. I think it's completely unreasonable that young athletes, such as those girls over there, are getting out at nine PM on cold winter nights. They should be able to practice earlier so they can prioritize their necessary sleep that they need to develop as players and students. Also, I think, or I know, our aquatics program at LBHS is one of, if not the most successful programs at our high school. Our program is being held back by the inability to host league and CIF playoff games, and I believe that this is extremely unethical. I and the rest of our high school team are strongly request that you keep the current forty-five-meter pool plan that was unanimously approved by the previous board. Thank you.
Looking at how late it's getting, if there are any other students that wish to speak, could we have them come up now?
My name is Penelope Jameson, and I'm a member of the fourteen-you-girls water polo team here at Laguna. I'm speaking today not just as an individual athlete, but as a representative of my teammates, many of whom share the same concerns I'm about to bring to your attention. As many of you may know, our club is currently using a pool that is in urgent need of attention. Unfortunately, the pool is not only in a state of disrepair, but it's also too small to accommodate all of us during practice. This leads to scheduling problems, and the oldest team, my team, often has to practice late into the evening. As you can imagine, this late schedule impacts our sleep and ultimately, our ability to balance training with our school responsibilities. In addition to the size and condition of the pool, we have noticed that some of our equipment is in need of repair, and there are some areas of the facility that require attention to ensure that they remain in good working order. These issues are not being dealt with because of the assumption that a new pool will be built soon. The delay in moving forward with a new pool affects our ability to train efficiently. Now, I understand that there are discussions about a new pool being built, and I certainly hope that that happens since the board approved of plan in recent months. We are not just asking for a new pool or better facilities. We are asking for the support and resources. We need to train at our best and to represent Laguna with pride and excellence. We hope that together, we can work towards resolving these issues and create a better environment for future teams as well. Thank you.
My name is Ari Rotabi, and I'm a player on the fourteen-you-girls water polo team. We are in great need of this pool because of the breaking gutters, chipped tiles, and decaying concrete. Our pool now is being, is way below regulation size to host games and other events. Getting a new pool would greatly benefit everyone and ultimately benefit us. There is many things that there is going on at our pool each night, such as practice, ten you practice, twelve you practice, practice for fourteen-you-girls, and swim meets, and swim team. There's also swim lessons, privates, and other practices that are going on. There's, a new pool would greatly benefit all of us participating in all these activities, and I know that I speak for all of us when I say, thank you for letting us share our concerns and our opinions.
Followed by Thesa Susiak.
Good evening again. You guys have a tough decision. There's a large turnout from the special interest group tonight of people that support water polo and other aquatic activities. There's also a lot of people in town that support, there's, there's a lot of people in town that, show a little respect, please. There's a lot of people, could you start the clock over, please? So there's a lot of groups in town that would want sand volleyball. There's a lot of groups in town that would want a better STEM program. There's a lot of groups in town that would want other spending. This is about a spending issue. My name's Gary Kasich. I'm part of Sensible Laguna, and I support improving the size of the pool in its current location, and doing it with a sense of urgency. I also campaigned aggressively to get the city to build another pool. So I'm in support of more water in the city. The original project started at about fifteen million dollars. That changed to nineteen million dollars. It's now twenty-four million dollars. That is a lot of money, and it isn't a decision that should be taken lightly. Part of the issue is the city, we've not been able to secure the city's participation. The two people who were on the board, who worked with the city to secure their participation, are no longer on the board. We need to go back to the city and see if we can find a solution that accommodates students, yes. It's very critical for them to get more water in the current space where it's at. But it's also important to see if we can fund some of that with the city. If the city participates, and right now, they're not participating, and that's a major issue, that could be a significant amount of money. Part of it, you've talked a lot about transparency tonight. I've looked at the numbers, heard what Mr. Dixon said at the prior meeting, and now he's given us that in detail. I'm having a hard time struggling with the numbers a bit to foot them. I had some communication with Jeb. We talked about transparency. Let's open it, let's work together, let's find the right solution. So the response to that request for transparency was, submit a public records request, and I'll show you how I did the work. Now, if that's this idea of board's transparency, I think we've got a little bit further to go. So you do have tough decisions to make. I support moving forward aggressively with this pool in the current spot, making it as big as you possibly can, but let's get the city on board and do it the right way. Thank you.
Good evening, President Perry and board members. My name is Thesa Susiak, and I am a proud parent of two adult children who graduated from Laguna Beach Unified School District. My daughter graduated in two thousand nine and went on to play Division One water polo on a scholarship at UC Santa Barbara. Her best friend went on to win a gold medal at the Olympics representing the United States. Both began their journey in our club program at the young age of eight, practicing late into the evening, often not going to bed until nine-thirty or ten because of the scheduling constraints associated with recreational lap swimming. Recently, when I informed my daughter that we were considering a new pool facility, she asked me if it was still the same pool she started in. I told her yes. Her response was simply, simple yet powerful. That is so sad for those students. Laguna can do better, and I couldn't agree more. We can and must do better for our students. They deserve access to hot showers in the locker rooms after early morning practice so they can arrive at class ready to learn. They should have the opportunity to have their peers, faculty, and the community come out to support them during the games, as well as the ability to host those events in a facility that reflects their hard work and dedication. Safety and accessibility are paramount. The current structure compromises both presenting a need for non-public locker rooms while ensuring the accessible restrooms are available for the public who come to use the pool. A new facility offers us the chance to advance community engagement by facilitating public lap swimming and youth water polo practices. The sport is growing in popularity, and our facility should evolve to meet this demand. As nearby communities invest in new or upgraded pools, it is imperative that we do not fall behind. Investing in first-class aquatic facilities will not only serve our students, but also enhance the property values in this town. Yet, the construction may cause, yes, the construction may cause temporary inconvenience, but it's essential that we prioritize our students and their right to access modern, adequate facilities. I urge you to keep the momentum going with this pool project. Now is the time to act to ensure our students have the facilities they deserve. I also want to mention that I was on the city's recreation committee, which is appointed by city council for twelve years. I went on that committee because my daughter, at nine years old in third grade, was swimming at eight o'clock at night. So I worked with the community to change the swimming times, because an adult, I'm sorry, can swim at eight o'clock at night. A nine-year-old little girl should not be practicing water polo. We need a bigger pool. It was in disrepair when she was there. This has been voted on by the board. We need to move it forward. It has to move forward, otherwise the costs just keep going up. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, Howard. Particularly, congratulations. You and I were on a boat, I think, was it maybe twenty-ish years ago, taking sixth graders across the ocean to a science camp. So if you don't think water's not important and having kids know how to swim in this town, then you're missing a very big point. It's probably a bigger need, given this close to the ocean, that all of our community is exposed to. Accordingly, as a CPA, I would like to caution you to be not penny-wise and pound-foolish. As everyone's saying, this pool is a long-term commitment used by everyone in the community. A pool's a life cycle. The biggest use of that life cycle happens to be for kids probably from the age of eight or nine, when they start competitively participating in sports, through the age of eighteen. And in this situation, you're looking at an old swimmer. We don't even have swimming in this pool, because you don't have enough space to accommodate it. I swam at the near Olympic level in my day. I got my kids to this pool, because this is the town I ended up in. But it's unfair that you're leaving out a whole nother population of youth that you, that we don't accommodate. And there are many parents in this town who drive kids to Irvine to swim on swim teams. It's a great program. You're looking at the product of, you know, the, one of the first people to go to, go to college on a, you know, on a full-rite scholarship, something that was unheard of back, back in those days, in the seventies. So I want you to know that I do not think that this, that money should be your blinder. You have plenty of it in your kitty, and it's a great use of funds that will extend the life cycle of a great program, you know, in swimming and water polo, which, by the way, I did produce one of those water polo girls. And you should also know that it's important, from an educational standpoint, if you look at the statistics of swimmers and water polo players compared to other athletes, they have the highest accomplishment rate, both of grades and in the job, and in the job workplace. Those are pretty proven backs through the NCAA. So I think what you're committing to, when you, when you commit what seems to be a little bit like too much money, is really a long-term commitment that kids will benefit for years to come through their adult, adult years. And I, too, like to swim with Eric Fisher, who, you know, modestly didn't tell you that he produced two Olympians here. And I think that it's, it goes to say that we have a heritage and a legend that deserves your financial commitment. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, though you might not like what I have to say. The only reason why this should be reconsidered is if you're gonna make it a fifty-meter pool. Newport Beach is doing it. We better beat Newport Beach. Okay? This is serious business here. October tenth, twenty twenty-four, unanimous decision to accept the forty-five-meter plan, and we'll take that forty-five meter unless you're gonna give us a fifty. You got a lot of cojones to reopen this. Okay? And it's offensive to the outgoing board members, it's offensive to the incumbents, it is offensive to all of us who are here yet again. At nine o'clock? My daughter's been on the club water polo team. She started out swimming when she was two or three years old with Beeler Aquatics, and she saw our high school girls come in, and she was smitten. She couldn't wait until she could start. She started during COVID, and I knew I was doomed when she found out that there was a water polo team going on for her age bracket. This pool has been here for thirty-two years. Okay, so we're overdue. We have been trying for much longer than the last couple of years. We've been trying, I think we've gone through this about four times. So there's a lot of money that has been wasted, whatever you all do to get to this point. Then, you have the increase in costs. My husband's a general contractor. COVID brought about a thirty percent increase in materials. You guys better step on it and move it quick and get that pool in there. And the only reason... And the only reason you should reopen this is for a 50-meter. Thank you.
Penelope Jamison, followed by John Alton. Meg Sanquist, followed by Susan Anderson.
Can I start? Okay. Thank you all for being here and for your service to the students. I am here as a former LBHS swim team member and a community swimmer. I swim at the pool a lot, not anywhere near as fast as these other swimmers you've heard from tonight. But I just want to say that, you know, 50-meter pool is standard competition size. And yeah, I understand we can't do a 50-meter, but we can do a 45, and we have approved plans and concepts ready to go. This pool is in desperate need of modernization. It's fallen apart, and I just urge you not to delay another second. You have this plan that's been the product of years of committed work on the board and the school and the community's parts. So I just urge you to keep the size, keep the amenities that allow community swimmers like me to go straight to work from the pool. And, you know, we have these world-class programs. We should have world-class facilities, and we should build these kids the pool that they really deserve. So thank you.
Tara O'Connell, followed by Julian Harvey.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. I'm here as a parent of three children currently in the district. And I suppose I'm part of the problem. I didn't protest loudly enough 35 years ago. I was shown the plans for moving the pool from the high school quad across the street. I said it was too small. I said the shallow end is inefficient and ineffective in teaching swimming lessons. The district and the city built what they built, and here we are. This board approved the facilities master plan along with the new pool, 45-meter facility at previous meetings. Interestingly, the item's back before us. In spite of the inadequate facilities, these programs have produced Olympians. And it's frankly shameful that we're back here having to relitigate this and discuss this once again. As Aaron Berryman stated earlier, your responsibility is the success, development, and well-being of the district's students. Mr. Hill's earlier quoted liberally from state law, the Education Code specifically, and I'll do the same. Education Code 35160 states, "The legislature finds and declares that school districts, county boards of education, and county superintendents of schools have diverse needs, unique to their individual communities and programs. Moreover, in addressing their needs, common as well as unique, school districts, county boards of education, and county superintendents of schools should have the flexibility to create their own unique solutions." This solution is unique, and it is a compromise, as has been discussed earlier. In fact, your mission and that of the district is governed by state law. The Education Code provides the authority of this board to invest resources in the furtherance and best interest of the district's students, and provides the board great latitude in carrying that out. The agenda item before us suggests that these priorities and this mission are not consistent across the members on this dais. Rather, this item suggests that K Street politics, campaign promises, and petty grievances are motivating factors, with the rationale being to save the dank inadequate bathroom building as the rationale. I urge you to once again commit to the previously approved design, a design which supports our athletes, allows for concurrent uses, allows for the pool to close at a reasonable time, allows for kids to get home, and allows for a competitive swim program in a city with seven miles of coastline. It is finally time to put this to bed and go back to what has already been approved. Thank you for your time.
Is it Rachel Rotabi?
I think my name was called earlier, but Julian just spoke. So I'm Susan Anderson.
Okay.
Thank you to the school board for listening to the community about this project for so many years and doing their due diligence and having a plan for a project already. And I support the project that is in discussion tonight. My name is Susan Anderson, and I've lived in Laguna Beach for 40 years. I taught at Top of the World School for 25. I've been a lap swimmer for 30 years. My children have all been involved in water sports, water polo and swimming through the years. And their children, my grandchildren, are in the programs today or have been already. And their friends have all participated in water sports in Laguna Beach. I support the approved high school pool modernization. Please proceed with your plans to improve and repair the high school pool. This pool will serve our water polo, swimming, track and field, and surf team athletes. It will also serve the water sport youth teams and clubs that feed into high school athletics. The high school pool is a community asset. It has served our community for 30 years, supporting our water sport teams, athletic teams, swimming education, lifeguard training, diving certification, and scouts among, there's more than that. Our young people and families deserve to have a safe, clean, modernized facility for years to come. Let's stay focused on the children and the families in our community. Thank you.
I think that's, it is, okay.
Come on up.
Excellent. Thank you. My name is Steve Brown. I swam for a ton of years, over 50. My kids swam. I played water polo. The good news is, I think the passion in the crowd, you can hear it. Everybody wants a pool. The better news is, the city wants to join the school district. The nuance here that I think is important for everyone to know is the school district took a position, and there's documentation to support this, of a threatening posture against the city, and that caused the city to backpedal. I think the city wants to join the school district. I strongly believe that. I think the city wants to put money in with the school district. I think that is a positive opportunity. I think, given the change on the board, you have a great opportunity to do this posthaste, get the pool in the ground, get that opportunity in front of everybody here and those who are not here. The great news is, I haven't heard one person say they don't support modernizing, making a lot bigger, and doing a lot of stuff at that footprint. And I think that's a fantastic thing to hear. And again, I just think, based on the conversations I've had around the city, there's an awful lot of city people who also would like to do something here as well. So I think it's a great opportunity here. So please move quickly and do what you need to do to keep things moving ahead.
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Smith. I am a proud mother of a 10-year-old little girl who was here a little bit ago. She lost her tooth while we were here. And it's nine o'clock, so she is hopefully in bed, if my husband is watching. And we also have a five-year-old little boy who tries to keep his head above water as he crosses the pool. So we're spending a lot of time at the pool these days. Congratulations on your newly appointed positions, Mrs. Morgan, Mr. Hills. Thank you for your service for returning board members. And congratulations, Mrs. Perry, on board presidency. I actually would like to address this comment to you because it's very apparent this evening that there is a new divisiveness amongst this board. And as I'm watching this all play out, it's very clear to me that there is a side that you are taking with the new members of the board. And I would like to remind you that the three returning members of the board voted unanimously in support. You've heard the stories today. I implore you not to change your vote because everyone that is here, and yes, it was called a special interest, this is a special interest. It is a special interest that you all took an oath to uphold, to support the children of this district. And so I encourage you, I'm not sure why this is up for debate again, to please consider keeping your vote to move this pool forward for all of the reasons that were discussed this evening. Thank you.
Is there anybody else?
Hi, my name is Jerry Rubin. I have three kids, two of whom are at Thurston, one's at Laguna Beach High School. I have a daughter who plays on the water polo team. Again, I, like many other parents here, do not understand why we have to renegotiate or relitigate this. We had a unanimous vote in support of the 45. To the new board member term divisiveness, it would only be more divisive to relitigate this. There was a great amount of compromise already to just go down to a 45. So again, if you'd like to talk about a 50, we're all for it. But I implore you all, please stay the course. Please keep to your votes. We want this larger 45 pool. So again, please maintain course and speed and go with the initial vote. Thank you.
Any more public comments? I'd like to thank you all for your comments.
Oh, sorry, one more. I know it's really late. My name's Lauren. Oh, sorry. You can start. Hi, I'm Lauren Berry, and I have four kids, which is a feat in and of itself, and three of them play water polo, which is really a feat. So I'd like to tell you where my kids are tonight. Actually, a couple of them are here. But typically, because of what's going on with our pool, my freshman, who plays for Laguna Beach High School, is having to go play for SET Water Polo Club, which is at El Toro High School. So he gets home at about 9:30 every night. Then he does his homework, then he eats dinner. And then my seventh grader plays for North Irvine Water Polo Club because we can't accommodate a 14U team here. So four days a week, he drives six hours back and forth for the whole week and gets home also at 9:30 at night. And you may have seen my five-year-old running around here because my husband was on driving duty tonight for five Laguna Beach kids, seventh graders, who are now playing at North Irvine. So my five-year-old has to be here instead of in bed. My fifth grader plays for the 12U team, sorry. And he practices until nine o'clock at night, three days a week. And he's 10, and his bedtime is 8:45. So it's just, it's really a lot for them. I think it's over, it's asking too much for them. They also have to be, you know, students, and they also have to be kids. And my seventh grader loves to surf, but the last time he was in the ocean, I don't know when he was in the ocean last because he spends six hours a week driving to Irvine to play water polo, which he loves. So, you know, I think that we're kicking the can down the road here. And my high school student, the other day, I felt his arms, and I went, are you shaving your arms? And he said, no, all the hair was burned off of our arms at the high school pool because they can't get control of the chlorine levels because it's so in need of what we all know it's in need of. So, you know, we're kicking the can down the road, but our kids are physically paying for it with no hair on their bodies. And with, sorry, short, and with no sleep. And, you know, I've got my 10-year-old at nine o'clock at night coming home, and I just, I really, I know we're talking about seven meters here between a 38 and a 45-meter pool. And I know that maybe that doesn't seem like a lot, but what it's doing is it's making all these kids have to leave our community. And we all know why we live in Laguna Beach. It's because the community here is second to none. It's because it's amazing, and that's why we...
Thank you. That's three minutes. Thank you again. Is there anyone else? Okay, let's move on to the report.
Thank you, President Perry. And also thank you for all who stayed and provided comment. I know it's late, but it is appreciated. I will try to go through this presentation briefly. It was included in the agenda itself as part of the backup. But some things we just wanted to highlight. None of this is new information necessarily, but it was an item that had been brought up as a request to discuss so that what our intent here as staff is to do is allow the board to discuss this as possible future considerations. But please note, this is not an action item. This is information only. So when we talk about why the current 45-meter pool concept was approved, there's certain needs and feedback that we've gathered over the years in regards to our process that led to that. One being enough deep water to allow for concurrent uses and multiple practices and programs to share, which you heard a lot in the comments tonight. Improving the sound and light mitigation to reduce impact on the surrounding community and neighbors. Having distinct separate facilities for community use as well as student use. Sufficient indoor and outdoor space for efficient storage. And we wanted to make sure it's sustainably built to limit operational costs. The current project of the approved concept is in design document development right now. And Member Morgan had asked, and I went back and looked at the current schedule of where we're at right now. And the soonest we would be submitting to the state architect for approval of those plans would be March, the end of March. I thought it was early summer, but the soonest, based on the current schedule, could be as soon as the end of March. The approved concept provides for new locker room restroom building, indoor and outdoor showers, team room, coaches, coaching offices, indoor and outdoor storage. And of course, it has the new mechanical room building and the community restroom building. One of the areas of interest that we've heard come up through this process is what would it take to maintain the existing locker room restroom building? And how would that shape the project? It would allow for us to modernize the existing locker room and restroom building to provide the sufficient amount of fixtures. It would, however, eliminate the space necessary for indoor showers. We would be able to reconstruct and modernize the boys and girls locker rooms within that space as well. There would be outdoor storage. We would be able to modernize the existing coaches offices and provide for a sufficient space for the mechanical equipment by doing an addition to the existing mechanical building. When you compare the benefits of each project, just focusing on the benefits, the current 45-meter pool option provides the expanded deep water to allow for multiple practices and programs to occur concurrently. Of course, it provides a 25-meter floating course for water polo. And that is in relation to hosting the CIF and playoff games that was brought up in those comments. Currently, the pool only has a wall course capability, and the floating course is the desired layout. It would increase the number of lanes swimming. It provides indoor and outdoor showers, a team room, improves views for the neighbors along Manzanita, and includes enhanced sound mitigation. Now, for the 38-meter pool option, it expands deep water, again, to allow for the 25-meter floating course for water polo, increases the number of lanes for swimming. It has a lower estimated cost of construction. And we do get into cost estimates later, but one thing I like to always remind the board is, one thing we know about cost estimates is they're absolutely wrong. It's just meant to give you a ballpark idea. We publicly bid these projects competitively. So whatever the bid climate is at the time will really dictate where that pricing falls. But at least we get a rough order of magnitude, especially when comparing and contrasting the magnitude between the two projects. And then we still would have, of course, the enhanced sound mitigation. When looking at the cost estimates, and the reason I reference back to the $15.8 million initial construction cost estimate, that was not based on the concept that we brought to the board for approval. So a lot of the solar and team room considerations hadn't been built into that square footage assumption. So a more realistic cost estimate for that project based on the approved concept would be $19 million. Soft costs would be the same for each project. Just as a reminder, soft costs are your architects... Just as a reminder, soft costs are your architect's fees, construction management fees, the agency approvals, and then a lot of your furnishings and equipment, such as your lane lines, your goals, the starting blocks, et cetera. When you look at totaling that up, the 45-meter pool concept is a little over $25.5 million as a cost estimate. If we were to modernize the existing building, that would be estimated at about $15.3 million, again, assuming the same soft costs. Noting that, and we did ask our architect, if we were to stop and change design now and go to the modernization route, that would be likely an ad service of about $300,000. One thing that we don't factor in is it would delay the construction by at least one year. So even if it's a six- or eighth-month delay in design, we wouldn't want to start construction until March of any given year to mitigate the impact on our programs. So any sort of short delay would result in a year-long delay. And as been mentioned, construction costs tend to escalate year over year. So that's not factored in here, but it's just something for the board to be aware of. And then one thing that we may not be able to do, which we were able to last year based off the county health inspection, was delay the significant amount of improvements found in that audit. It totaled to about $1.5 million. If the project is delayed, we may not be able to go without doing at least some, if not all, of those improvements. So you're looking at somewhere in the realm of $1 to $1.5 million. But still noting that the delta between the 38-meter pool and the 45-meter pool pretty much matches. If you go back to our September 28, 2023 board meeting, we looked at the difference between a 40-meter pool and a 50-meter pool. And the cost difference was about $2.6 million. And so it's a similar delta with this project, just noting there's some modernization versus new construction costs. But at least we're getting in the same ballpark, and it gives you a rough idea of the magnitude of the difference or the potential savings. When you look at the programmatic features of what the 45-meter pool accomplishes versus a 38-meter pool, that's the intent of the last slide, is to show that was the feedback that we had heard up to this point that we wanted to accomplish with the project. We still can accomplish some of those desires that we've heard, just not as many, and that's the point of this comparison. So as I mentioned, I'll leave it for you to discuss. And I'm here for any questions. And of course, if there's any follow-up or additional information that you would like me to provide, I am happy to take note of and follow up with a weekly update or a future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that comparison, Mr. Dixon. Are there any questions?
I have a quick question, Mr. Dixon. I just want you to clarify. The only difference I heard in terms of new information was that it's possible for us to move ahead beginning in March as opposed to July. But nothing else in this report is new information that has not been presented to the board or the community before, correct?
The only new information would be the modernization of the existing facility, which we haven't looked at. We just looked at various pool sizes.
Which you did for comparison purposes. But in terms of the current, what we approved, there's no new information. Thank you.
Can you repeat that? Did you say that the only piece, the only thing with the 38-meter pool was that we looked at the comparison, but we didn't look at the possibilities? What did you just say?
We looked at the comparison between various pool sizes, starting with our current 25-meter, going all the way up to a 50-meter. The one area, the new information, would have been the modernization of the existing facility. We didn't know if the number of fixture counts could be, could fit within that footprint, which it would. It just would eliminate the need or the desire for indoor showers, which we heard was of interest. So that's why it wasn't considered.
So when we're looking at this 38-meter plan, so we actually have not put pen to paper to see if we can expand the existing building that's there and add to each side of that. Because as you come up to this, up the stairs, you have the breezeway, and you have the boys' locker room, the women's locker room, but then there's a space on either side of that. So we have not actually put pen to paper to see if we can make all of these fixtures fit within this space. Is that correct?
We can make the fixtures fit, just not the showers. That would be a new option to do building additions to support additional functions of the building. But again, that would be more cost, and you're getting it closer to the 45-meter cost at that point as well.
So the project that was approved in October, at the time that it was presented, it had a bank of outdoor showers. And at the time, there was only room for one shower inside. Has there been new plans brought forward that show us that we can get all those showers inside?
No, the plan that October 10 had an indoor shower for the boys' locker room, the girls' locker room, as well as a community restroom.
So it has one shower for the boys, one shower for the girls, and one community restroom? And then all the rest of the showers are outside?
Correct.
So the 45-meter plan then does not have indoor showers either, other than the one, correct?
One for each boys' and girls' locker room and the community building, yes.
And in this 35, 38-meter pool, we don't know that we can get at least one shower inside because we haven't put pen to paper. Is that correct?
The architect did an initial spatial analysis, and we were unable to do any sort of indoor showers based on the required fixture counts.
So that doesn't make sense. Because if we have a bigger pool and we can't get showers inside, but we can only get one shower inside, how, if we have a smaller pool, can we not put more showers inside?
Less square footage than the existing building versus the proposed new building.
Right, but can we remodel the existing building and retrofit it and make it bigger so that we can get more showers inside? Excuse me, I'm asking questions. I'm asking questions for clarification because one of the things I have found, and why I asked to have this brought forward, is because I believe that there are a lot of questions that have not been asked. And I do have a lot of respect for this process. I think if the 45-meter pool is the right fit for our community, then we should go forward. But there is a lot of new information. The city is interested in going forward. Excuse me, I have the floor. The city is interested in going forward. We have a new, we have a new board at the city. And they have asked if it's possible that we could come back to the table and rediscuss this issue. And how can, how would that look if the city were to invest in the pool? And what would this look like? If we were able to, if we were able to accept money from the city, what would that look like? So I'm asking questions. So when we spoke earlier today, you had mentioned that the earliest that we would have plans ready would be this summer. So what has changed between June and March? And where are we at in that process? And is this assuming that CEQA has no issues? And CEQA is not going to delay the process any longer?
I don't remember the specific detail in the timeline built, but usually timelines assume best-case scenario. So I think the end of March would be our best-case scenario for submission to the division of the state architect. To your previous question, no, the option of looking at doing building additions to the existing restroom locker room facility to accommodate indoor showers or any other ancillary uses was not looked at. So that would be a different option.
Okay, so that actually is new information then, that we haven't looked at that. Is it possible to pause without delay if we were to expedite an ad hoc and bring this back to a group to have them look at other options that might conclude expanding the existing building? And if we were to expand the existing building and use the facilities, use what's there? And maybe we can get a 40-meter, maybe we can still get 45, I don't know. But if, is, would that expedite the development process so that the construction time was less? And our downtime of the pool is less? Because I think there's a value there. If one design element, one design direction is going to take nine months to develop or 12 months to develop, and another one is only going to take six to nine months to develop, those three months of driving six hours round trip, those add up too. And I'm a mom of a swimmer that swam at 4:30 in the morning, and we drove out to Irvine three days a week, and then drove again five afternoons a week. So I do value the time that it takes to get to different places to play and swim and compete. But I think that we need to look at all of the options that were not mentioned, that a lot of people have taken time to do a lot of research on. I know Sensible Laguna has six or seven different possibilities of working with the existing plan, putting in a bigger pool. I know the city has come back and said they're very interested in participating, which means more funding, which means it's possible to get two pools. But without having a more open dialogue between the two entities, it's hard to say if this is the perfect plan if we can maybe bring everyone back together as soon as the new year starts and have another conversation to see if we've really explored the right, perfect plan for our community. Because this is all about the students, but it's also about taxpayer dollars.
So I just want to clarify that we had an ad hoc committee, and you're acting as though we haven't been discussing this with the pool. And we're more than, I'm not done. We're more than happy for the city to work with us, and the city has been very open to working with us. But at this point, they have, you know, claimed that they're working with us for the time being would not be upfront investment, but possibly renting, which would include the cost of the asset itself and the construction. So I'm just trying to get clear. Since all of those discussions have happened for two years, it sounds like what you're really interested in doing is going back to a 38-to-40-meter pool. Is that the goal here?
No, that's not the goal. The goal is to make sure that we've exercised all of the possible options that weren't brought public to the community so that all of these options can be looked at. As Mr. Dixon just mentioned, we did not look at, can we expand the existing building on each end to accommodate indoor showers? A 45-meter pool only has one shower inside. So that means we have a bank of showers outside. And one of the concerns that was, that came to me from the community was that in the middle of winter, even if we can move the timing up so that the kids are out of the pool by eight o'clock, it's freezing outside. And these kids are supposed to have an outdoor shower. And if we're not looking at a possibility to create more indoor showers, then we haven't looked at these plans extensively enough to make sure that we don't have a solution for more indoor showers. There's one element to that. The second part of that is that the city has come back and said, we would like to work with you on the pool. We would like to help fund the pool. We'd like to help consider funding the pool. I shouldn't say they will. And with a new city council and a new mayor, they are very, very interested in developing a plan that incorporates the high school pool and a community possibility that would solve a lot more needs than one pool. And I think the other thing we need to realize is the 45-meter pool is not a community pool. It's a high school pool. And for us to go into, for us to go into an agreement with the high school, we are not, we are not responsible for running city programs. We are a school district that is responsible for educating our kids. And so if we take all of these programs away from the city because they don't have a pool, that means we are leasing the pool back to the city. And who is going to be overseeing and running that program? The district? Well, the district is not in the business to be running city events or city programs. We are in the business of educating our kids. And so by taking all those programs away from the city and saying that we're going to run, we're going to run those programs by leasing pool space back to the city, that means we're running those programs, and that's not our job.
Okay, so I just would like to point out that the approval of the pool was not an approval of every design aspect of the pool. It is still possible to relook at the showers or whatever. The approval was for a 45-meter pool, understanding that the city would continue to use the pool. There was never any intention for the city not to use the pool. We spoke very explicitly about the importance of the pool belonging to the community and coming up with a way to work with the city around how they would best use it. That's something I believe in, in my heart of hearts, that it's important for the school to be central to the entire community. So what you're talking about, like, there are 1,000 different possibilities we also didn't explore. So the idea that we will, we would reopen this for one particular possibility makes zero sense to me. We voted on a 45-meter pool, and we can talk about design.
Jeff, I have a couple of questions. May I have the floor, Mr. Morgan? Am I right that we have the money as far as to do this project?
Yes.
That we, we have saved, we've saved the money. Some of this is COVID money, but we do have the money. So we really don't need money from the city. The city has no money. And the city, you know, has led you on in some ways that they're going to, you know, build a community pool. Now, now, good luck. We are going forward. We have the money. We have, we've decided on the size of it. And I think that we should do this as fast as we can.
So we're actually in discussion, not in questions. So we probably need to limit it either, either move to go into discussion so that we can make a motion if need be, or not. But right now, we're in discussion.
We also need a motion to extend the meeting.
Well, I know that the city has offered to, has asked specifically to come back to the table so that they can explore how they can help fund and help have better access to the pool. We had a 70% joint...
We don't need to re-vote on the pool for that, though.
Okay, I have the floor, I believe. I've been recognized with the floor. And if we're going to practice good governance, it needs to start with all of us. So the city was a joint-use agreement prior to this project. They funded 70% of the operational costs on a daily, on a daily, monthly basis. For us to look at the city and say, well, we have the money. We don't need you, is not building community. It's not working with the new city council. It's not extending the opportunity to look at other options that were never considered because an outside entity developed a plan that they said would work within a space that doesn't take the whole community's needs into consideration. I respect what our students are doing. As I said, my kids have swam in this pool, and they have gotten home late. And I understand that this is a difficult situation. I understand that it's not a popular request to bring this back. If I've upset you, I do apologize. I was trying to do the right thing in bringing this in so that we could look at other, the possibility of bringing the city in to help fund this pool, which would lead to a second pool, which could lead to more funding for our special ed programs, our science programs, and everything else. To say that we have the money and let's just spend it is not, is not fiscally responsible. And that's not our job up here, to sit here and say, just spend the money. So...
Call for...
Mr. Dixon?
To extend the time?
Second.
Okay, the time will be extended.
Mr. Dixon, in your consultations with the city and all the outside groups who used the pool in the past, have we not taken that into consideration in the size that we can, we can do this? That's what I thought the last report, the weekly report that we got summarized this for us. Am I right in my recollection?
Yeah, so as the discussion's been going on with the city and the negotiations going on with the city, what we've heard from the board and from the city was there's no intent for the city programs to not have access to the pool. What we would do is have probably, more than likely, individual joint-use agreements with our private youth swim and youth water polo clubs so they can get dedicated time. And then in worst-case scenario, if there's no joint-use agreement with the city, they would rent the pool through our facility use program, which is identical to how outside user groups use our fields, rent our theater, rent our gymnasiums, something we're accustomed to dealing with. And, but again, that could be, that doesn't preclude us from developing a new individual joint use for the pool with either the city or any of our private groups that would like access to the pool.
Thank you.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, I, what was that?
If the city could build a 50-meter pool, if we were to take a step back and a pause, would that be of interest to anyone? We have a new city council, and they are interested.
Yeah, I just wanted to add since conversation's been taking place that, you know, a lot of people in the community still feel as strongly opposed to this as you all do in favor of it. Yeah, where are they?[1712.12] Yeah, where are they? Excuse me. That's right. Where are they? That's a good question. And I can tell you that, you know, a lot of them have contacted me and whatnot about it, but I'm sure they've contacted other people as well. But what, you know, I hear from them is that, well, what they did is they approved it in concept and that there's still the possibility of the city coming in. And so I think that it was good to have this information item on the agenda tonight. And it's good to hear that you certainly have maintained your cohesion in support of the project. And I think I've paid attention and heard what people have said tonight. And I'm thankful to the people who came forward and were here tonight. And so I think that it was, but as we've noted, it is an information item and not an action item. So that's where it'll rest.
Can we move the agenda?
Yes. Okay, now we are moving on to an action item. Board consideration for the process of hiring or approving an interim superintendent?
I'm not sure what we're supposed to discuss since the process discussion was circumvented. What is the question on the agenda? It was supposed to be on the agenda, discuss the process, but we are no longer having a process, it sounds like, unless you have some suggestion that I'm somehow missing?
We did not appoint anyone. We just directed the staff to create a contract so we can discuss the process of bringing a contract forward.
No, that's not a process. A process is we should get more than one candidate, perhaps. We should schedule a closed session for the entire board to interview that person. We should make a decision. We should make sure that the community understands how we're making that decision. And then we should proceed with doing it, perhaps at the January 8th meeting, because we have a, or 9th meeting, because we have a meeting scheduled. Since you've moved in closed session to move ahead with appointing an individual, what is the process question here?
We were advised by an attorney that we were able to do that in closed session. But it is a point that you're making, and so I'm trying to address that point, that to insinuate that there is something inappropriate with the process. There is nothing inappropriate with the process. We followed governance protocol. We were, we were advised by an attorney. And how it was proceeded was within the guidelines of the Brown Act and board governance.
Well, actually, I have heard tonight a lot of discussion of legal this and legal that. This is just a fundamental issue of how the new board chooses to work together. And voting on a candidate absent a process in a closed session with people who have never met this person, you might be legal, but it certainly isn't a way to promote good governance. So my point is made six times in the meeting, and I keep hearing it's legal. I don't care.
Well, I'd be glad to respond to you in the context of process. I think you're misinforming the public. First of all, a little bit earlier, a little bit earlier, when we were talking about the fact that the process or the lack of the process for terminating the former...
That's not what this is about.
You know, every time somebody tries to make a point, you interrupt and say they shouldn't talk. So would you allow me to speak? Because, you know, sometimes there is, you know, you can say, we're talking about this topic, so you can't talk about that topic. But when somebody's trying to make a point that the other topic relates to this and illuminates it and enables people to understand it, I shouldn't have to be explaining that right now, but apparently I do. But earlier, when I was pointing out that the process for terminating the former superintendent did not conform to state law, I wasn't making a legal point. My board member, Kelly, said, well, the lawyer told us, the lawyer advised us on how he did that. The point I was making is that it wasn't that you did something inconsistent with the law, but the legislature had given you a model for dealing with the superintendent's status that would have allowed us to have a cooling-off period. Instead, you anticipated a problem, and you terminated the guy. And so that was not a legal-ish thing. I'm not complaining about how you did that legally, but the process was flawed because now he's gone, and a lot of people aren't happy about that. So we have to deal with that. And because that happened, we have to get interim superintendent. Now, if you want to talk about process, we did not preemptively or in any final way appoint anybody to be interim superintendent. What we did is we expedited the process for bringing forward a candidate. And that is not going to lead to that person being appointed unless the board decides not to enter into a contract. So every member of this board will have full opportunity to vet this candidate and decide whether or not to vote for this candidate. But if we did it your way, we would be waiting until January 23rd to do that, or we would be... Well, no, yes, it is true, because there's a meeting in January, what is it, 12th or 8th or whatever? Yeah, January 9th. But the point is, the process that we have is one that is going to bring us forward. And if we get to the point where, over the next few weeks, the process will be, and we should consider appointing a committee to, an ad hoc committee or something, to handle the contract negotiations. But if we get to the point where you all decide you're going to vote for her, we will have that done before January 9th, and that matters. And the fact of the matter is, when you talk about a process, you talk about it as if there's some framework or model process. Where is this model process? It's not required by law, and it's not required by policy. There's no policy of this district that requires us to have a process that conforms to the one you conceptualize to be the best one. I respect the fact that you think that that's how the process should be, but there's nothing that compels that process. So we have made a decision as a board to jump-start this process so that we can get to where we need to go. And so you're going to have an opportunity to decide whether or not you want to vote for Dr. Culverhouse or whether you don't. And that is a good process.
I'd like to make a clarification here. The old board did not fire the superintendent. The old board chose, as far as to buy out his contract, because new people coming on had made lots of comments on Nextdoor and other places that they were going to fire the superintendent. And we thought, the old board thought it was in the best interest of the children, families in the school district, to move on, to allow you, as far as with your majority, to bring on who you want and for us to do it in the easiest way possible. But it had nothing to do with being dissatisfied. He had got exceptional evaluations all the time.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Kelly. I think that that all has been made very clear in the statements that were released by the district. I don't know what you're talking about Nextdoor, because I don't even know what Nextdoor is. But, yeah, and I know you can too, from what I've heard. But the point I would make is this. The point I made earlier, when you talk about process, the legislature provided a process, and you chose not to follow it. And, you know, you've written a letter to the editor saying, you know, that somehow you determined, or he determined, or together you determined that he couldn't work with this board. I think that was a miscalculation. And I think it's, you know...
What I've seen tonight, I don't think it's a miscalculation.
Well, you know, you're entitled to that, but it's at the expense, it's at the expense of an outcome that you lament, so.
Yeah, and it's pointless at this point, but what I want to add is that I had no perfect process or idealized process. I had a suggestion that would have been up for board discussion. If I was going to pick a process that would absolutely be out of the question, it's the one that played out. It wasn't transparent. It wasn't inclusive of the whole board. And it didn't give people a chance to review one candidate's information or possibly two. Doing that would have allowed us to meet in closed session the first week of January and vote on January 9th. Same outcome possibly, but with transparency and unity of the board. So enough said.
Well, hopefully, we'll achieve unity of the board.
Can we move the agenda to do the business that we need to do so we can get everyone home?
Yes, let's move the agenda to, would you agree to consider how we will hire a new superintendent?
I was going to 10, is what I was going, I was going to action item 10.
Well, 9B is...
Do you want to talk about the process for hiring a new superintendent?
I think we should discuss 9B. I think we should discuss the process. I think we should make sure it's very clear that to hire a long-term, to hire a superintendent, we want to make sure that it's a fully-vetted, community-involved process. As Howard indicated, we have an immediate emergency need to make sure our district has leadership consistent all the way through. And we've tried to bring that forward, and we provided that solution. And so now it's searching for a superintendent. I think we need to understand the process to open that, to begin that search.
I would recommend that we put out for RFP to get a search firm who would manage this and then be able to meet with the board and talk about all of those details. But we don't need to work through all of that tonight. What we need to agree to is that we are going to interview search firms to conduct a search for the superintendent. Whatever process... I'd like to make a motion that we direct the staff to do that.
When we, if you, if you're directed to start interviewing search firms, at what point do we make sure that, at what point is the community's involvement in the process included?
So we wouldn't be interviewing search firms. We put out an RFP, and we would get applicants back, and you would review those applicants and determine which search firm you'd like to utilize. The search firm will have plenty of community input as part of the process while they go and have, you know, open it up to applicants. So again, a standard part of the process is to have town halls, other meetings where you get input from the community and all stakeholders. That's part of all aspects of a superintendent search firm. So that'll happen.
Are there different, do different search firms have different styles of how they go about looking for a candidate? Or are they all relatively similar, and it's just who's got the experience that we're familiar with, or people that we like? Why would, what is, how do they differ?
They have, they all have some different techniques to it. But that's, again, through the interview process, that's the opportunity you're going to have to ask those questions, ask them, how do they differentiate themselves from maybe their competitors?
Is there consensus for that? For hiring a search firm? For putting out the RFPs, interviewing search firms, and eventually hiring a search firm?
You know, it's kind of just an abstraction that we've taken an effective action that can result in having an interim superintendent on board who, among other things, would be working with our staff to develop... See, so we're trying to get to where everybody wants to go, but because we're not getting them...
We all went the same thing.
And, you know, we, so if we go through with a contract with Dr. Culverhouse, she will be working, before then, I'm sure she'll be, first of all, if the staff doesn't know her, she will get to know them. She'll get to know you guys. She'll get to know everybody that doesn't know her. But the point is that, so, you know, to talk about right now, appointing a search firm, I think we should be talking right now about getting her contract done.
We're talking about the search firm for the full-time...
Yeah, no, I understand that. But the task of having the staff talk about going into a recruitment firm is something that, when she arrives here, she will be working with the staff to accomplish that. So, you know, I think we just need to keep that in mind. And what we're being presented with is, you know, the idea that somehow, if we have a different process for her, that it all will somehow come together in roughly the same timeframe. So my comment is that if you want to direct staff to do that, go ahead and direct staff to do that. And if we end up approving her contract, their work and their effort doing that will then converge with her coming on board, and we'll move forward.
May I ask a clarifying question? So you're saying that her work with leadership associates would be intermingled with her work as interim superintendent?
What's that?
Her work with leadership associates, who she's currently employed with, would be intermingled with her work as interim superintendent? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I, I would think that if she's here as interim superintendent, she's going to be involved in trying to help manage the search for a new superintendent. I mean, that's...
But I think what we're looking at agreeing to right now is just reaching out and interviewing some different search firms. And if Joanne is here and can help us with that, great.
And so I don't know how many hours or dollars she's allowed to make in a period of a year. So that's one thing. The other thing is, I'm a member of the Registry for University Presidents. If I get a job offer, a part-time position, since I've signed the contract with them, they do the negotiating as far as with whoever wants to hire me. So I believe it's the same thing, since she's already signed on with this group, that it's this group that really, you know, if this is who you want, then this is the group that really should basically be employing her to work with us.
I think, I think maybe that may not be the case. Yeah.
Dr. Kelly, to answer your first question, per CalSTRS, the maximum that they can make is approximately $74,000 in one year.
Yeah, that's consistent with what I understand.
So are we, so really what we're looking for is a motion to direct the staff to begin the request for proposal to search for a superintendent, correct?
Yeah.
So I move to make, to direct the staff to make...
We have a motion in the second already. There's a motion in second on the floor already.
Do you want to call the question?
Call the question.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Animus, 5-0. Moving on to another action item, 10A, approval of positive certification of first interim report, 2024, 2025. Is there any public comment? Go ahead.
Thank you, President Perry. So as an annual requirement, districts make changes to the adopted budget coinciding with fiscal activities from July 1, the start of the fiscal year, through October 31st. And that's what the first interim report is based on, is those changes we're seeing in actual expenditures, actual staffing levels over that time, as well as accounting for carryover that occurred from prior fiscal year. Districts will then do a second interim budget report or update in the middle of March, and that covers the data from October 31st through January 31st. If, for some reason, the district is qualified or negative in any of their interim reports, their first or second interim, they're required to do a third interim report, which I'm thankful we have not had to do, and nor do we foresee having to do that in the near future. So as far as the changes go from the adopted budget, we saw a revenue increase, it looks like a little over $1.5 million, and that's mostly attributed to a higher-than-expected growth in local property tax. And it's a little over 1% over the adopted budget amount, as well as a fairly significant amount of rebates that we're likely going to have access to from our workers' compensation insurance. It's a rebate that, once you get to a certain funding level and the actuary tells you that you've exceeded the liability amounts that are necessary to maintain in that fund, and we are a self-funded joint powers authority for our workers' comp, you can get a rebate. And that is going to be on one of our upcoming board items. I serve as our district's rep on that board. As well as, we have our dental insurance, who's been providing us annual rebates based on the overture of premium amounts that most employers paid during the pandemic time period, because a lot of people did not have access to their dental insurance at that time. So it resulted in paying a premium for not getting the service. And so they're still paying us on an annual basis. And just for context, that's been about, this year, it was about $15,000, and we anticipate that occurring in the next two fiscal years as well. As far as expenditures go, we adjusted the expenses for salaries just based As far as expenditures go, we adjusted the expenses for salaries just based on the actuals that we had through the end of October. Benefits were also adjusted based on our actual enrollments that occurred. As you know, our benefits plan begins October 1 every year, so it doesn't align with the fiscal year. I guess my time is up. So I can talk through it, because you'll see all this in the report. The benefits now align with the actual enrollments of where employees chose their plans and whether or not they added families or took different plan options. A big change in books and supplies, and that's $525,000. And that really accounts for a lot of the carryover we had from prior fiscal year that were assigned for various items, and the big one in here being the security camera upgrades at Laguna Beach High School. That was about $300,000 that has been assigned for this current year, wasn't last fiscal year. We had 2.1 million increase in services and operating, and that primarily had to do with our routine restricted maintenance projects. A lot of those projects were smaller in nature than anticipated, so rather than be capitalized, they were just part of our routine maintenance. So it was a non-capitalized project. And subsequently, that resulted in about a $320,000 reduction in our capital outlay, which a lot of that is accounted for in those maintenance projects. When looking at the ending fund balance, which is important, probably the most important piece I'd like to point out for the board, is your, your fund balance, because there are certain requirements that districts must maintain, and especially when going for a positive certification. And we show a growth of a little over $2 million in our ending fund balance, from 22 million to a little over 24 million. That is primarily attributed to, within the components of the ending fund balance, you'll notice the assigned amount of dollars increased by a little over $2 million. And that increase translated to four, a little over $4.3 million in ending fund balance for potential one-time dollars to support board goals and initiatives. So at adopted budget, it was a little over 2 million, and now it's a little over 4 million. And there you see it up there. We still have, within the assigned, the $10 million to support the facilities program in the fund balance, as well as $300,000 for textbooks. And that's just anticipating an adoption, starting maybe at the end of this year or into next year. So we're going to hold it in fund balance so that whenever it does occur, we have the money set aside. When looking at the multi-year projections for our fund balance, you see where we're at this year. We're projecting the ending fund balance at first interim to be slightly over $24 million. The reason for the fund balance drop in 2025 and '26 is that assumes the transfer to support the facilities master plan program that's in the assigned balance right now. That won't just happen with approval of the budget. Every transfer out of general fund has to come to the board with a resolution, and you're going to see that example in the next two items. And then we see, again, a growth in our fund balance in '26, '27. Noting that, in all cases, the assigned portion of the ending fund balance is well over the $2 million mark, which is a buffer that we like to include in our general fund so that we can be nimble and react to things like, hopefully not as extreme, but we are able to react quicker than most districts in responding to the pandemic because we had flexibility in our fund balance and did not have to draw on reserves to make purchases prior to receiving any sort of relief dollars. So it's just a good practice we'd like to recommend to the board. So with that, staff is recommending a positive certification for the interim budget adjustments, which essentially means we're demonstrating the ability to meet our current, as well as our two fiscal out-years of liabilities with the revenue and expenditure assumptions to date.
All in favor? Oh, a question, sorry. I'm really jet-lagged. Are there any questions for Mr. Dixon? Thank you for that report.
Jeff, thank you for all your work on this. It's a lot of information for, to absorb as a new, a new member. I know I've been keeping track of the, the reports and the finances. The total transfer for '25, '26 is $13 million. Is that, are the funds, what different funds, is that just coming out of the general fund for facilities repairs? Or what is the total $13 million transfers for?
Correct. So that assumes, within that assigned amount that you see in '24, '25, you see there's $10 million set aside for facilities master plan. That assumes that transfer would occur in '25, '26. As I mentioned, that would require a resolution, and it's based on the current expected cash flow needs to support our capital improvements. But that is the reason for the increase in the transfer. And then, to the point of it being a lot of information, I totally, I respect that, and I encourage that the board not wait for just these items to ask questions, but throughout the entire year, if you go through your budget books and ever have questions, I really appreciate you joining the Joint Fiscal Management Committee. We like to dig in and really tell how these numbers tell a story. But this is a living document, and questions drive a lot of how I present information so that it can help clarify, not just for you, but for also the community, who would likely have the same questions.
When is the next Joint Fiscal Management meeting? And when is this report due?
This report is due today. The first interim positive certification is required by law. Normally, it's December 15th, but because that fell on a Sunday, we're able to do it today, the day after. The next Joint Fiscal Management Committee will likely be towards the end of January so we can review the governor's budget proposal and talk about what those implications might have on our district, honing in specifically on community-funded status and what that means for us.
So approving the interim report tonight does not approve transferring funds? That's a different item later. And it doesn't, it just approves the report being submitted, correct?
Correct. It approves that we are able to meet all of our financial obligations this year and the next two fiscal years. All transfers have to be approved via board resolution as a separate standalone action item.
So then is it fair to ask, if we fund the facility plan that includes the pool at 20 million, how do we fund the rest of the facility plan that's the balance of 80 million? And how is that reflected in this report?
So, the transfer of fund is not just for the pool, it's also for, we currently have in design our TK Kinder modernization at both Top of the World and Elmore. So that's actually in design as well, tracking the same state architect approval timeline as the pool. And then going forward, when we bring the facilities master plan for an update, we show how the cash flow may line up with those projects. And what's happened historically is if the projects exceed our expected cash flow, they bump out in years. So we do not, without an influx of unexpected new dollars, we do not plan for them unless we can afford to do them in that year.
Aren't we required by law to build the TK in kindergarten classrooms? So if we don't have the funds, we either need to send out a bond or extend the bond that we have, or we need to find other sources of funding, because we have to be in compliance with the TK classrooms, correct?
Yes, and they are, they are assumed as funded. We're self-funding those right now.
Oh, we are self-funding?
Correct.
So, how, and that, but that's within that $80 million budget, correct? For the facility plan, the 10-year plan?
Yeah, I would say that's not a budget, that's an estimate. And then as we line the projects up over the 10 years, we look at how our cash flow and our contributions or transfers could go to support that work. And that's all lined out, just for reference, in Board Policy 3100 of how our transfers are planned and budgeted. But it's not something we can do unilaterally just by approving a budget. We have to bring those resolutions for transfer to the board as a standalone action.
Sure, I appreciate the information. Again, just trying to understand, because we just received the agenda on Thursday with the, with the community, and then the details in the binder yesterday. Or no, we got this binder last, I guess, Friday, Thursday or Friday? So it's, it's a lot to make sure we understand completely, because everyone's done a phenomenal job of managing the funds, and I certainly don't want to get us off the wrong foot by not asking enough questions to understand it properly.
Does anyone else have questions? We can move on to discussion. Is there any discussion? Okay, if there's no discussion, we can move on to the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, thanks. Passes, 5-0. Okay, now, approval of Resolution Number 2410 to establish an interim fund transfer of $900,000 from the general fund to the special reserve fund for facilities repair and replacement program for 2024, 2025. This is Mr. Dixon again?
Sure is.
Thank you.
So this is an example of what I just referred to with the transfers. These are our annual contributions from general fund to support the, in this case, the facility repair replacement program, which serves as our fund, acts as a big deferred maintenance fund for us, with the next upcoming project being the stadium turf and track replacement scheduled for this summer. In the past, it's also gone to support our recently completed roofing, re-roofing projects, as well as some major mechanical upgrades and replacement projects.
Questions from board members? Call for a motion first? Oh, okay, this is a roll call vote, just so you know.
Sorry, I had a question. So the, so 900 is for the stadium, correct? That's what you just said?
It's an annual contribution we've been making since at least 2015 in that amount. And it, one of the projects that's going to support most recently is going to be the stadium this summer.
Okay, and so that's, how much did we, did we transfer last year for this?
$900,000, every year.
Thank you.
Questions? Any other questions? Any other discussion? No? Let's vote.
Member Morgan?
Yes.
Clerk Hills? Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Malchesky?
Yes.
President Perry?
Yes.
Action Items, 10C, approval of Resolution 2411 to establish an interim fund transfer of $1,200,000 from the general fund to the special reserve fund for capital improvement plan for 2024, 2025. Mr. Dixon?
Yes. So similar to the last item, this is another transfer from general fund, this time instead of facility repair replacement program, it's to our capital improvement program, otherwise known as CIP. This annual amount has not changed since its inception in 2015, and this regular transfer allows us to continue with our capital improvements as planned within the district, more recently having to do with the TK Kinder modernizations that we've recently just discussed, as well as the pool.
Call for a motion? Thank you. Questions?
Jeff, is the, how does the bond that's about to expire in 2026, how does that fit into all of this?
Okay, so there's no assumptions based on a school bond. It actually expires in 2028, and that would be if there were ever, whether it's in 2028 or any year after that, any assumptions built into the budget of bond proceeds would only occur after a vote went for a bond and it actually passed. Otherwise, we would make no assumptions within our budget for geo-bond proceeds.
So if we transfer these funds and fund a pool and fund the TK classrooms, the rest of the facilities plan would either be on hold until we have more funding or move more funds? Is that, is that how that, because it's a 10-year plan, so we need to move funds over every year. So if we have the, if the money's been moved so far for the facility plan, for the pool portion of it, and we've moved, we're moving funds for the TK, which is required by the state, right? What, if, how do we, if we have other projects on that plan for the 10-year plan going forward, then do we move money every year to fund those other items as they come up in the facilities plan?
Yes.
It's like we have, we have Thurston expanding the stadium seating, which I think is super important, having played in that gym as well. There's, I mean, there's other projects in the facility plan that are really important that we want to make sure we can fund.
Yes, and that's why these amounts, they haven't changed, the 900,000 for facility repair replacement and the 1.2 for CIP. But they could in the future if the board wanted to expedite some of the other projects. But typically, we just work within this cash flow that we're provided to line out the projects in our master plan as far as the timing of construction.
And that's typical for all projects, except for the pool plan, we went ahead and transferred the 10 million earlier last year, earlier this year, correct?
We have not transferred that. That's still in the general fund balance, and that resolution would have to come to the board for approval when we needed it, but it's, we're keeping it within our fund balance for now.
Got it, thank you.
Does anyone else have questions? Discussion? Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Member Morgan?
Yes.
Clerk Hills? Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Malchesky? President Perry? Thank you.
Moving on to the consensus calendar, Item 11. Are there any items anyone wishes to pull?
I'd like to pull Item C.
Any other items? Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment. We're looking at a motion to approve Items A through L, except C. Start with D? Oh, okay. We'll move to approve Items D through L. All in favor, oh no. All in favor? Now, a motion to approve Item C. All in favor? Oh. Oh, okay, question?
So I'd like to, I'm pulling Item C because I have concerns about the accuracy of the contents of the minutes, and I'm requesting that staff provide more information about specific contents in the minutes, and I move that this matter be tabled until the next board meeting, where it can be added as an action item on the agenda.
Can you tell us more about what the issue is?
I think that there is inaccuracies in the reporting of the minutes that don't reflect the actions taken out of closed session. Like staff to further investigate it prior to approving it.
If I may, that is the information that was provided on the report out. So, to me, by the attorneys and, and staff. So I don't know what investigation you would want. It's what happened.
Right, we'd like to table it and have staff look into it until, and bring it back as an action item in, in January. When you guys came out of closed session on November 21st, it was reported, and it's on the film, that there was no action taken out of closed session. And then the minutes reflect that there was action taken in closed session, and that needs to be explored, and the legalities of that needs to be followed up on with our attorney. And that has, that was an advice, that was advised by the same attorneys. So I'd like to table this item and bring it back in, in January for, as an agenda item for an action. To table it? So I make a motion to table the item, so I, has it been seconded? Has that been made? So I second it.
All, all in favor of tabling the item, Item C?
Aye.
Aye. Oops. Onto board member reports. Okay.
I would pass as well on, I've given my reports already, unless by popular demand you on an explanation of the, of Section 35150 again, but. I learned something from that tonight. I'm not, I'm not going to make the same mistake twice. Too much legislative history sometimes.
So, again, I, when we started this meeting at 5:40 and came out of the swearing-in, I had made, I had made a comment, or I made a, I presented a statement that I had made. I do take this job very seriously. I know that it's going to be a very difficult experience at times, and we're not all going to agree, and I understand that. I, I do not do this with Malington. I did not come in this with any agenda other than to represent our students. I went to the California Student, the California School Board Association meeting the day that our election was certified, and it was a really And it was a really fascinating observation to see not only all of the different sessions that you can attend on governance. I was able to ask a lot of questions. I saw a lot of things that did not necessarily reflect how we've done things here. There was the idea of it, but it isn't always... Wasn't always done consistently. It's going to be... We're going to stumble. And like I said earlier at 5:40, we expect grace for our students when they make mistakes. We want them to learn through trial and error. I have been in this boardroom for 14 years. I do know a lot of the policies. That doesn't mean I'm not going to stumble. It doesn't mean I'm not going to make mistakes. It doesn't mean that my intentions are not anything but genuine in trying to work with the community as a whole. The school board's only item, as I had said then, was that the only item on the budget is education. But as a governance body, we do represent the entire community. And it would not be serving the entire community if we made a decision that focused on one group and the demand for doing something that has been, yes, in process, but the process itself was not initiated under the... As the mayor, Ranagi, had said, under the spirit of art design review. So I am not trying to inflame the community. I certainly would not want to sit here and get beat up like that every single night. And that was not the intention. The intention of bringing things forward is to offer a better opportunity for transparency and a better opportunity for us as a community to come together and find solutions that aren't so divisive. The ugliness is on display for everyone to see, including our students. And I think as we came out of this election, we can, you know, we don't need to go back. We can spin it. We don't even need to spin it however way we want. But if we want to set the example for our kids, we have to put the divisiveness and the ugliness of what that looks like and has looked like, whether it was city council or here in this boardroom. We have to put it behind us and find a way to go forward where we're not challenging somebody's intentions so harshly and recognize that we're all trying to do a job that represents the community of which we serve. And we serve the students first, but we serve the community as a whole. And we do have 79% of this community that does not have students in the district. I have students in the district. They walk the campuses and the halls every single day. And so I just want to say that, you know, going to that conference was an excellent opportunity. I think it would be beneficial for everyone to attend so that you can see how things work and how districts do it differently. And different districts presented their challenges, and a lot of them started with, "We were so dysfunctional, and look at us now. We've won all these awards for governance and everything else." And so those are the... And some of those were led by award-winning superintendents and boards and people that have been in this industry for a very long time. So I respect all of that. I honor all of that. None of us are the experts in the room above all else. So I just ask you to keep that in mind as we stumble our way forward and do the best job we can to represent all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said. I agree with a lot of that. And I certainly hope we can all put together, come together, put our students first. We... I know each one of you have students' intentions, students as your top intention. I'm sorry. I'll be better next time. I'll get some sleep. I move we adjourn. Seconded.[1792.81]